This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. I'm State Treasurer Falwell welcoming our board and our participants in the audience to the January 26th, 9:00 AM meeting of the Teachers and State Employees Retirement System, Local Government Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees meeting. As we generally do, as I call them being to order, I'd like for you to stand and join us for our pledge allegiance and those of you who are not familiar with the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I solicit the flag of North Carolina and pledge the old North State law of loyalty to the Father. Thank you all very much. Members of the audience, we do have a public comment section. Several have signed up for public comments, so we appreciate you being here. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted online with more materials. We ask that you meet your phone or computer if you're joining us remotely, if you're not speaking, and obviously those in the audience. We'll be taking a roll call by name, and without objection, anybody who makes a motion or second to motion will be counted as a yes vote. So hearing no objection. Board members, if you leave the meeting at any point, if I join you. If you leave the meeting at any point, especially those remotely, please announce your departure so that we can record that from minutes as well as your return. Please state your name for the record before speaking. Finally, and very importantly, text another report to communicate with board members during the meeting, even on personal devices, our public record to the extent that they concern the business of the meeting. We'll do a roll call to determine a court. So teasers, board of trustees, Dale Falwell.
Here.
Blake Thomas, delegate for Barbara Gibson.
Here.
Catherine Truitt. Dirk German.
Here.
Jeffrey Winston.
Here.
Donna Bighouse. A loud thunder is here. Joshua Smith. Joshua Smith. I don't, I don't hear Joshua. Lance Brewer.
Here, good morning. Good morning.
Sorry, is it Lance Brewer?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Linda Gunther.
Present.
Margaret Reader.
Here.
Oliver Holly.
Here.
Pat Hurley.
Here.
And Vernon Gammon.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. And Joshua Smith? I don't hear Joshua. And now elders, board of trustees, Dale Falwell.
Here.
Brenda Howerton. Brenda Howerton. Brenda, I don't hear you. Catherine Truitt. Lee Atkinson.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Homer Dearman.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Jeffrey Morse. Jeffrey Morse. Don't hear Jeffrey Morse. Kevin Gordon. Kevin, Kevin Gordon.
Hey, good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning. Thank you. Lance Brewer.
Here, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Melody Brady.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Nancy Vaughn.
Present.
Present.
Thank you. Pat Hurley.
Here.
Tony Brown.
Here.
Vernon Gammon. Vernon, Vernon Gammon, he's on. I didn't hear you the second time, Vernon. I want to, before we go into the business of the meeting, I just want to tell you in addition of how John answered his roll call, how much excitement, enthusiasm, and optimism there is in this building. It's been a very difficult two and a half years at the treasurer's office. We have crammed in the check delivery business during that entire period of time, and obviously there's a lot going on. And I just, as we go through these meetings, you're going to hear some reports and other things. And I just wanted to tell you that if you were able to see what I see and to hear what I hear every day, what would come very apparent to you is the common sense and the courage of the staff that works at OST. And some of you know that very well because you've worked here before. It's just incredible. And how people in this building advocate for the invisible are always focused on what's fair and just and the best interest of the members. It's just in every respect, you know, health plan, pension, oral one, banking, NC cash, it's just stunning. So I just want to start by, anybody who's in the audience or listening, I just want to give all of our OST staff a round of applause. The staff, Ted Brans here, who is kind of the glue that keeps all that together. So Ted, thank you very much. All right. Now, we have an ethics awareness identification of conflicts of interest or potential conflicts. Members, you've seen the agenda, you've seen the issues that are before us today. Does anyone have a actual potential or appearance of conflict of interest regarding the matters that are before us? All right, hearing none, please take a moment to look at the statement of economic interest, both for elders and teasers, the SEI evaluations. We include these in our meeting minutes of the exact required in conflicts. The identified evaluations will be recorded in the meeting minutes so that these evaluation letters will not only be a part of today's proceedings, but can serve as a periodic monitor of conflicts as has been identified by the Ethics Board. Are there any questions regarding the SEIs that have been presented to elders and teasers? Also, board members should have reviewed, should have received an email from Laura Rowe, and I would just give you some friendly advice. If you receive an email from Laura Rowe, you should not just receive it, you should review it. And regarding your 2023 SEI forms, which are new. Now, we have the great pleasure of officially appointing Pat Hurley as a new member of the Board of Trustees of the teasers system as well as the local system. And as many of you know, has a longstanding, had longstanding commitment to this system, not only as a public employee, but as a legislator, was the chair of several, several of the board committees this board deals with time to time. She was appointed to fill the spot of Greg Patterson, and her appointment, I guess, is at the discretion, at the direction of the speaker. Is that correct? So with that, Pat, welcome. I know that I'm a Randolph County person, you're a Randolph County person, we probably shouldn't be doing too much swearing even as well, but we're going to do a little bit here for good reasons. So we'll turn you up here. You got to be on your best behavior when you're representing a person. All right, you'll place your left hand on the bottom and raise your right hand. Do you swear that you honestly administer and execute the duties as a member of the Teachers and State Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees and a member of the Local Government Commission Retirement System Board of Trustees according to the best of your skill and ability, according to all the help you got? Congratulations. Welcome. I'm sure many of you have been down the Highway 220 and Highway 64 in the last few years, you've seen this thing called the Random Man Dam. It's a reservoir that gives water to people in that community. In case you don't know the story of how that got built, there was a Hurley and a Falwell who were walking through Randolph County about 50 years ago, and one of them dropped a nickel. And they dug, and they dug, and they dug looking for that nickel. Wouldn't give it up, would you? At the end of the day, you end up in this great big hole, which is now the reservoir. So that's the real history of the Random Man Dam. Random and reservoir is that Hurley and a Falwell were walking through there, and they wouldn't let that nickel go to waste. So does that describe us?
Oh, yes.
With that, we'll get on to the other parts of our meeting. First, for these approval of the meeting minutes of October 27th, October 27, 2022, for the Board of Trustees, meetings for the teasers. Do I hear a motion or second from a teasers board meeting regarding the approval of the meeting minutes?
I have a motion to approve meeting minutes.
I'll provide a second.
Thank you very much. It's not as easy to say as it looks. With that, any further discussion about the meeting minutes of October 27th? Hearing none, the court call roll. Treasure Falwell.
Hi.
Blake Thomas.
Yes.
Dirk German.
Yes.
Jeffrey Winston.
Yes.
Joshua Smith. Lance Brewer.
Yes.
Lance Brewer. Yes, Lance. Okay, thank you. Linda Gunther.
Yes.
Margaret Reader.
Yes.
Pat Hurley.
Yes.
And Vernon Gammon.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll now entertain a similar motion from members of the elders system regarding the approval of meeting minutes from October 27th.
Lee Atkinson.
Thank you, Lee. Next, second. Do I hear a second to approve the meeting minutes from an elders board?
Vernon Gammon.
Vernon.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. A lot of things, but hearing none. Court of Call roll. Treasure Falwell.
Hi.
Brenda Howerton. Still don't hear Brenda. Homer Dearman. Homer Dearman. I don't hear Homer. Jeffrey Morse. I don't hear Jeffrey Morse either. Kevin Gordon. Was that you, Kevin? I don't hear Kevin. Lance Brewer.
Yes.
Thank you. Melody Brady.
Yes.
Thank you. Nancy Vaughn.
Yes.
Thank you. Pat Hurley.
Yes.
Tony Brown.
Yes.
Kevin, you're supposed to keep Kevin in line. Your responsibility. So that motion's approved, and now we'll entertain a motion without objection. Can we combine these two? I guess the adoption of resolution of appreciation for the services of Greg Patterson on this particular, on this particular board. Greg served as a member of the Board of Trustees of this system from 2015 to 2023. He's always been interested in advancing retirement systems. State government employees made valuable contributions to the work of the boards through his service. His service has proved to be of high value in the enactment of many improvements through the years and programs to the teasers and the elders board. He rendered outstanding leadership in preserving and promoting the retirement systems with maximum benefit consistent with sound funding for the state of North Carolina and board of trustees retirement systems and the elders system as they are composed of distinguished citizens. Therefore, therefore be it resolved by the board trustees of the teasers and the elders system that we express our deep appreciation and gratitude to Greg Patterson for his leadership in public service and securing the advancement of the retirement systems. Chairman and Secretary of the Board are hereby directed, prepared, and deliver a certified copy of this resolution to Mr. Patterson, and the resolution will be spread upon the minutes of the boards and trustees through the meeting held on January 26th, 2023. Do I hear a motion from the teachers board to accept this resolution? So, thank you, Mr. Jeffrey. Second.
My second.
Thank you. Pleasure second being made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Court of Call roll. Treasure Falwell.
Hi.
Blake Thomas.
Hi.
Dirk German.
Hi.
Donna Bighouse.
Hi.
Joshua Smith. Lance Brewer. Lance Brewer. I don't hear Lance. Was that you, Lance? I hear Lance. Margaret Reader.
Yes.
Hi.
Oliver Holly.
Yes.
Pat Hurley.
Hi.
Starting again.
Ah.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I hear a similar motion from the elders? Second.
Second.
Do we have the second?
Lee Atkinson.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Court of Call roll. Treasure Falwell.
Hi.
Brenda Howerton. I don't hear Brenda still. Homer Dearman. Homer Dearman. Don't hear Homer. Jeffrey Morse. Here, Mr. Morse. Kevin Gordon. Kevin Gordon. Don't hear Kevin. Lance Brewer.
Hi.
Thank you. Melody Brady.
Hi.
Thank you. Nancy Vaughn.
Hi.
Thank you. Pat Hurley.
Hi.
Vernon Gammon.
Ah.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. These expiration dates on each other doesn't really mean anything. They don't. They don't. It says 2020 on the side. I think it's some Harlan Bulls. Myonics. All right. Let's slave update. Sam Watts.
I'm sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry.
I totally misspoke. Mr. Rick Lopez, Tanya. Patrick, please come up to the operations update. Oh, you need to go?
I wouldn't mind going.
Oh, do you mind? As you know, Sam's wearing a few hats these days. He's interim director of the state health plan, so a few things going on with the state health plan.
Thank you, Treasure. I always swore after 30 years of listening to folks present the committees and the legislature, then someone said, "You're taking one hat off, another one on the top." That was about to hear something that was a conflict committee. So I want to tell you, I'm wearing both hats at the same time. December, our secretary of directors, the health plan moved on to greener pastures, and so Treasure gave me the opportunity to step up to the director. But we're a little too late in the process to backfill on the legislative role. So now I am wearing both hats, and I'm happy to serve and do as much as we can on both With regard to the retirement system legislative objectives this year, first and foremost is always fully funded board recommendations on funding of the system. If you do what I think you're probably going to do after reading the materials today, I think you're in good shape to absolutely fully fund the employer contribution, the base employer contribution for the retirement system. That's being developed into the budget process as we speak, at least the base contribution. Additional benefit enhancements, whether they be a permanent call-up or a one-time supplement are obviously issues that we'll part a lot of discussion. After you have your discussion here, we'll part a lot of discussion on Jones Street as to how they would be funded. I don't think anyone's expecting a certain answer. I think that they are looking for advice and information. Just be perfectly frank. On the retirement systems policy initiatives, we anticipate bringing forward a technical corrections bill as we normally do. It's a little thin this year because we've been, we've been very successful in making other in recent years and keeping the statute in shape, but we still continue to constantly want to make sure that the retirement systems laws are, are up to date and well instructed. Retirement system administrative changes, a few minor changes, one of the, probably the most significant of those that we're proposing is changing a longstanding concept in the retirement system, and that you're not retired until you cash the first check. The advent of online banking, electronic deposits, there's a lot of people now who want the first check to be electronically deposited. And so we have to define, okay, at what point are you retired? Because when you get a paper check, you can always say, before you walk in the bank and cash it, I'm going to not retire. I'm going to go back to my employment. This is something that the system has worked on very carefully. They've drawn a new bright line that will be in the statute on when you're retired to be receiving your first check electronically. So I'm sure Patrick would be happy to answer detailed questions on that, on exactly how they're, how they're at least structured. There almost still is thunder, because I suspect he's probably going to mention pieces that will get his attention. But that is the most significant number-facing piece of the administrative bill. I don't anticipate any objections from the General Assembly on that, but it is something that's friendly to members, and I do think it's something we're going to be very careful on, and someone won't make it too easy to do that, and we will establish the bright line of what is the point of retirement, because at the point you retire, a lot of things are set in stone. It's a personal decision. We're also bringing forward a Part III of the service purchase rewrite. You recall, those of you who've been around for a few years, we set out years ago to go through the 88 different purchase provisions in all the retirement systems and standardize those as much as we can. Down to the short holes, we have one more batch of those. We broke it into three parts to make it easier for the system staff to administer the changes. If we changed everything all at once, we were going to be overwhelmed with, have work and with things to do that. The feedback we received from the team within the system, within that system that does that is they are very happy now. It did create a bit of work for the first couple of years on it as we, as they had the transition, but now we're reaping the fruits of that decision to simplify the service purchase process. And we're also, it is to the financial advantage of the system by at least 30 million a year in the way it's been based on the actual separate pass. So it's good policy, it's good administration, and it makes it very clear when we explain to people how to do it. This rule applies to all these different options. Another piece of legislation that the retirement system will be recommending, Treasure will bring forward on behalf of the retirement system, is a bill that we brought to a short session last year, made through the House, not made through the Senate. Representative Hurley may, former representative Hurley, may remember when the judicial retirement system parity bill came to the floor, the members of the House were abused, I would say, that the judicial retirement system has an unremarried surviving spouse benefit. In other words, if you.
You got to say that sentence just a little forward.
An unremarried surviving spouse benefit. So you only get the.
Which doesn't happen in Randolph County. Right, all right, go ahead.
The, you know, the spousal benefit only continues if the spouse remains unmarried after the judge dies. That's a, I don't know that if it was ever a common feature, but it's certainly not a common feature in our benefit structures. We would also make that benefits on parity across all the systems as part of that judicial and other retirement systems. Those are the major retirement initiatives. I thought I would also mention the treasures' broader goals for legislation, and obviously retirement system funding, but also funding for the state health plan. We're facing a $4.2 billion gap in projected appropriations and actual need for the health plan over the next five years. The General Assembly has done a great job of appropriating its goal of fullness and growth, but the actual costs are increasing 70% and absent desire to pass that on the members, which there is no desire to do so from this office or from the health plan board. We want the General Assembly to help us close that gap. The treasures also bring forward a Medical Debt Weaponization Act. That medical debt weaponization act is pro-family and poverty effort that brings transparency to medical billing. Major medical providers frequently effectively use credit scores as a weapon against folks. Treasure may want to make a couple of comments about that. This is an act that has been, it's in parts of it, in about 16 states. In fact, the state of Arizona had it, did it as a valid initiative in November, it passed by 73% in a state where everything else was decided by less than 100%. This went down, this went by 73%. So we're also looking for additional improvement in healthcare transparency laws, also governance transparency laws, because you don't want to be arguing for a healthcare initiative to be transparent with our government, to be more transparent to them. What's good to them is good, it's good for us and vice versa. Did you want to say anything about medical debt? I will, actually, but it's already finished. That's all I have. I'm happy to take questions on either half, if you want.
I have not received a check. Am I retired? So I'll put that out there, so I don't get in trouble here.
You're, you're from the perspective of the retirement system.
Which system?
The judicial, I mean, not the judicial, the legislative.
You still got to pardon him?
No.
You're not getting any check?
No.
Oh, gosh.
I'm not getting any checks, and I don't know if it's a deposit, but they said I would receive a check, but I have not received a check, so therefore I have not cashed a check. So I just want to, don't want to do wrong.
We don't, the retirement system staff doesn't count you as retired until you cash the check, and it shows up as in orbit as having been negotiated.
Somebody will be looking at that while we're sitting here, sure.
Am I eligible to serve right now?
Yes, sure.
He's already doing it.
Any other questions about Sam?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the treasure. This is Jeff Horst. I just came online. I was in another green house, so I'm present.
Thank you. Any other questions from the phone, from the elders or teasers board member or in person, from the things that Sam's presented as, as let's slave update?
I have a question. All the things that you were saying, would they be listed in the minutes, or will you send something out? I was trying to take notes, but. I was trying to take notes, but, and it looked like you had shorthand over there on yours.
I think what we normally, I think we normally list these in the minutes, and then once we have available collateral, and we have the bill and the post-creation, I think we don't have that available.
So we'll put them in the minutes, and then we'll build available, we'll send that to you also.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to point out that this meeting is being recorded as well, so for anyone who may want to go back and listen to comments.
Your check's in the mail.
Good, yes, but I haven't cashed it.
Have you been home?
No.
Oh, well, see, you have been home, so you...
I do.
So, any other...
I wanted, sorry, I'm not supposed to right now.
Any other questions? Just two brief comments about, I don't know what the origin is of this first check thing, and I can tell you that it doesn't happen often, but when it happens, it's messy. You know, Debbie Thomas is sitting back there, our HR Director. I mean, you literally have people who have retirement parties, they announce that you're ahead of time, they go on retirement vacations, everybody says goodbye to them, Debbie works for months to post these positions, to backfill their position, hires an individual, and then a person gets the check and then has buyer's remorse, and says, I don't want to retire. So all that has to be unwound, not the parties, of course, but everything else has to be unwound, and we're just trying to tighten this up in the modern era. I don't know what the origin of this was, but that happened often, but when it happens, it's a mess. Secondly, Sam talked about the financial advantage of the third tranche of these buying policies. Let's be clear about what that word means. What that, I've seen it with my own eyes in this very room over here, where somebody will walk in with a, or three or four years ago, like a member says, $13,000, $14,000 check, presents it to us, immediately creates for themselves like an $87,000 increased benefit, because that's what the rule said were allowable. That benefit is being taken by from everybody else in the system. So I always look at it as there's a visible winner, the person who I see bringing that check in here, and all the invisible losers are the people who are actually having to pay for the increased benefit of this vision. So I think tightening this up is fair and just, not for the people in this lobby, they come into the lobby, but the people who are out there working or are retired, that everybody be treated equally along those lines. So that's what, so that 30 million number you heard was quite the benefit of the system, it was the benefit to the members of the system in that respect. And it's along the lines of pension spiking, where somebody has something happen in their last four years that allow them to get more of a pension than what they contributed to the system, those costs have to be paid by everybody else in the system. So we sort of look at everything through those eyes. Other questions or comments? Okay, Sam, go put your other hat on. And thank you very much. And now we will go to Rick Lopez, Tom Bass, and Patrick Kinlaw for Operations up there. Stop, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm doing well. I'll try to keep my comments real minimal, I know Patrick has a lot of work to do today, and I want to do this on that, so I'll try to do some highlights of each of the sections, retirement operations. So we'll start off with the retirement processing section. I think one of the things I want to point out, though, from 2020, counting year 2020 to 2021, we saw a 7.3 quarter increase in the retirement process. The following year, 21, we had a 6.16% increase. So we're gonna have roughly 40% in the retirement process. What are we doing to address that? Well, we've been working overtime, but we've also recognized that increase, and we added staff, we added QC positions and two analyst positions, so that we're able to accommodate as best we can this increase in retirement. January, we had 2,700 retirements as people apply, and actually followed through to the end. And then, and that was in line with our 2022 January. So we're just keep, we're gonna be watchful of that. And as you guys can see on the slide, if you look in March and you see how our turnaround times start to go up, there's a reason for that. In March, that's when people can start applying for their July retirement. And you see that big number up there. Last year, we had over 4,000 applications. We actually didn't have that many people follow through, I think it ended up being around 3,800 people that actually retired. But the impact of that one month is significant, and that affects us all year long. So we're really trying to level that out with staffing, addressing that, looking at processes, making changes, always trying to refine. We work closely with our QC's and our analysts, because they're the people that do the work and have the best ideas, so we're in contact with them, really trying to focus on what we can do within our power to keep those turnaround times down and get things turned as quickly as we can. So for debt processing, prior to 2019, I'm not sure that we had a month with 1,000 deaths or more, and many of those months were significant to the less. We're talking 400 to 600 reported deaths per month. Obviously, that has increased significantly. Now we're averaging over a year between 900 to 1,000 deaths. Some months were in the 800s, upper 800 usually. I think the last time we saw deaths under 800 was in, reported under 800 was March of 2020. So significant increase there. How much of an increase? Well, from 2021 to 2022, 31%. That's a lot. What we're doing to handle that, we've worked with HR, we've worked with the legislature, acquired more positions, working overtime, we've added QC's as well as analyst positions. The good thing about a QC is I can move a QC to an analyst role. When I see a bottleneck and where it is, I can move that person over. So it's good to have a QC that's flexible to move with need. We're also looking at compartmentalizing administrative functions. That's one of the things that we have spread out over the analysts and the QC's, where they pull from what we have worked with a box, towards things like death certificates for various correspondence we receive. And what we're trying to do is allow for one person to work that at a bit of time for a week, for a couple of weeks, so everyone else can focus on processing. See some good movement with that. There's some other things we're doing, we look at. One of the things we require in our turnaround times is identification, any proper identification to pay someone. That is, unless we know that someone is that person to be paying. And so what we're gonna do is, we have required some paperwork to go along with that ID that's necessary, but we have a system that we can query, and that allows for us to identify that person, that name, that social, and all the information. If I see somebody in my system that's been a spouse of somebody, and they've been married for 30 years, I'm not gonna request that identification, there's no need for that. I know who they are, and I need to get them paid. If we have any question, any, we can use our Accurate System, or we can send our correspondence requesting information. That's why they call them analysts, these guys need to look at what the need is and analyze that and make requests to court. So those are some of the more detailed things we're doing in the department to try to get these turnaround times down, aside from working overtime, salary for adding staff, because we have to project that this is either gonna sustain or increase, and we have limitations in what we're allowed to do, looking at processes is the big part of that, continuing to be mindful of staff requests, working to get those, that's another part of it. Just a little bit of information on debt process.
Rick, I think that, just a correction, I think the 31% increase from 2019 to...
I'm sorry, yeah.
2019 to 20... They want to, you know, over a year.
Sorry about that. Still a significant amount. So for disability, we have, unfortunately, we've had a lot of turnover in that section, which is a very small section, over the last two and a half years. Currently, we're down to analysts, and we just recently had a QC that was assigned to refunds retire. So we're making that position a dual role position, and we're allowing for that person to process disability and refund QC's. So that's gonna be helpful, I think, addressing both of those. We've cross-trained all of our QC's in the refunds process, so they can do both, but we've had a recent high volume, January, of applications for refunds, so our department is doing a blitz on those. We dedicate a day, maybe one day of the week, to work refunds and process those to payment, recognizing that when people apply for these refunds, they want their money as quickly as possible, it's usually a financial hardship. We always try to advertise that's not the best idea, people understand that, and I think it's clear when they make that decision, sometimes it's a decision they emotionally take it anyway, but when they make that decision, we've got to get them to it as quickly as possible. So that's what we're really working to do there. We have a very small group, it's with the other QC shift in total of three QC's and nine analysts. So quite a small group of people, get a lot of work done. Our turnaround times, you can see, we're gonna repay for disability. So with disability, you can see our turnaround times are hovering right around our 60-day mark. We went over slightly, one day, 61.6 days in December, but with limited staff, we're still in control, we're still working to get those turnaround times down. We're also having discussions with our medical board on things that they feel they might need to help them make decisions, where they want to go and the direction they want to go administratively with their hearings, so just touching everything we can to try to ensure these turnaround times are better, and the goal is at the least, go lower.
Do you know the estimated number of people who were on disability?
I don't have that number. How many do we have right now?
On long-term disability, there's between 5,000 and 6,000 right now.
And then short-term on top of that?
Right. Short-term is no longer paid by our department.
Okay.
And disability retirement as well?
Right. I just had in my mind about 9,000.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Rick.
Short-term disability, as you guys know, short-term disability, though an employer can make that decision, rarely employers can make that decision. And that is probably the most, we probably get about 60% of our workload is making short-term disability accommodations. For payroll processing, you see, in December, we had over 354, our monthly payroll.
Sorry, Rick. So that's why I was asking earlier about disability or refunds. So you cover refund.
Well, I kind of spun it in, I didn't specifically cover refunds, because refunds the main issue that we have, so I just try to keep those turnaround times.
Tell the board generally, like, the top one reason why refunds, somebody wants a refund, that means they're exiting the teasers or the elders.
Teasers, exiting, that's a perfect example, I have a personal friend. He decided to exit the system and take a private sector job, and he, his mother was also very ill, and not a government employee, but very ill, and they had some financial hardship, and he understood the consequences, but he elected to make a withdrawal.
And we are also trying to clean up our roles. What we're trying to do with cleaning up our role, people who, they have two years in the system, 41 years ago, that's also part of this?
That's also part of this. We've actually...
Find that a little bit.
We actually have a campaign going right now, we're just doing email blasts to people we identify who have been in the system for a significant amount of time. We're not vested or not vested, right? And that's something that we have seen a response from. So we've seen some bigger months of refunds than others, I don't know what percentage, I can't really put a percentage on how effective that's been, but these are people that have been out of the system for years, they're not people who've been pleased to be able to do the system, and they're not vested, and they're likely, from what we see, not going to come back. But our message is clear, there are consequences for that withdrawal, and we continue to pound that. We want to make sure that people understand, you lose everything, every thought coming back, it's up to you, may not want to do it. So there's the proper messaging in that with our outreach.
Question.
So the people that are not vested from years ago that still have funds in the retirement system, are we just notifying them that they're still there, or are we encouraging them to do something?
We don't encourage them, we just say, hey, it looks like you've been out a while, there's money if you want it, but here's the consequences.
Okay.
Decades. A lot of people are decades, literally.
And then we pay them juice, pay them interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is not nothing.
4% per year.
Compounded.
Yes.
Right. Can that follow?
Yes.
You have a follow-up? You have a follow-up question?
No.
Okay, good.
41 years, an email, how are you tracking it? Are we just going through the voter registration, or do you have...
Well, that's why we're starting with email, because if we mail a lot of letters out, we're likely gonna get a lot of letters back.
So you're just using the last information, by the way, the last...
Well...
I don't think I had email.
And then, and then the next thing is probably potentially a referral call. Then we'll get to the main, just trying to, because I think there was an effort before me, if I'm not mistaken, Tom, where we actually filled thousands and thousands of correspondence out, and we got...
I was getting, whatever we had on file from them when they left the system, is what we're reaching out to, either gone to Spokio or White Pages or some other agency to try and get them.
We do have that at our disposal, but there's a fee with that as well, so we're really trying to just, we're trying to do it for free right now.
Well, that was the first attempt, too, and it is 100,000 people, and so it is a little unnerving if 100,000 people apply at once. It's kind of like the first step in a series of things that we'll be doing to try to reach out, find them, contact them.
Yeah, we send them in increments, we usually send to 3,000 a week, so that not all of them apply at one time, if they're gonna apply, and also in fact, my partner here, because they're gonna call. What do you mean? I got this email, what are we doing here? So we have to be mindful of everything that potentially touches with their call volume as well.
And I would just add, the reason we're scaling into this is that we wanted to be automated so that people could do these refunds online, and we wanted that system to be ramping up before we totally ramped up this outreach. And we were at 41% online refund.
I'm not sure about the refunds, retirement's are around 40, 41%, but refunds are significant, but I can't speak to that percentage.
Yeah, so people can't do it online.
It's a trial and error.
So that was just a, and a couple of reasons I'm interested in this. Number one is that, we can't encourage the National Guard to clean up their roles, we can't encourage the volunteer fire departments to clean up their roles if we're not willing to clean up our roles. So part of this is just us sort of living with what we've asked some of these other customers of ours to do in this system. We should be able to cleanse, to fix our, make sure our stuff is tight, just like the takeaway document is for the fire departments and whatever document they have with National Guard, so part of this is based on that.
And just to add, alluding to the refunds online, because we know that some of those monies are significant, we've actually added something that we hadn't previously done, which is an identification authentication feature in that module, so that you're gonna have to prove that you are and you say you are before we even move on with anything. Still a manual process on the back end, but you're not getting anywhere until we know that you're, you say you are. That's very helpful.
Last question. Sorry. Sorry, just, we have an approximation on the numbers of who they are. Do we have an approximation on the risk for overall funded retirement system on that dollar figure? Are we talking 200 million, 600 million?
I would be able to speak to that. For people who are not vested, they are only entitled right now to get a refund. It's only a matter of when. And I believe, folks from Buck behind me could perhaps answer this more specifically, but I believe the assumption they made when they measured the funding condition of that is that all these folks will go ahead and take their refund immediately. So by people doing that, it aligns them more with what the actuaries are already assuming.
But maybe the question was, the total, we're talking about 100,000 people. Does that represent how many hundred something millions of dollars?
I'm not certain.
I had that, I had that number in my head, but I've lost it. But anyway, we'll be sure to get that. That's a few hundred. I have 112 billion, it's not, you know, it's not billions, I don't think. Great comments.
Question. Seems like, I remember one time that if a person got a refund and they were not vested, or if it was two years or less, that they only got the amount that they put in the system. Is that still the case, or with these? Okay.
We know, but by statute, we pay interest.
Okay.
Compounded. And you know, you said four or six?
Four.
So the rule is 72 every, like, 70 years, whatever you were supposed to get doubles, and then it doubles again, then doubles again. This has been a long, long, long time. I'm sorry, and I interrupted you.
That's fine.
Yeah. Go ahead.
And so for payroll processing, in December, we had over 354,000 fees, our monthly payroll. And the amount we paid out was nearly $593.88. Things to point out with payroll section, the annual file for 1099Rs and W2s was delivered to our vendor on 1/3/23, January 23rd. As soon as we deliver that, that information's available for you in self-service. Very helpful to people that like to get a job on their taxes. And we make people aware that that is available, though some people still like to get it paper, and that's fine. We do have an opt-out feature now, self-service tool out with the option to receive paper. They're going to get their electronic, whether they get paper or not. But they can choose to save a tree if they want and get things instantly and electronically. Still, though, having delivered that information to the vendor on the third, all of those were printed and out the door to the postal service that mailed them on the 13th of January. That's faster than we've ever done it. It hasn't necessarily helped with call volume, apparently, but we, we are just trying to offer the best customer service we can to people that want to get a job on, on taxes and get things done.
I don't want to spend any energy in comparing us with other states, but I heard what he just said. Those forms were out the second week of January. I think that is unbelievable, so congratulations. Big deal. So to get that done, and we were the, we were the earliest to do it after COVID. I guess, 2021, no, 20, 21, yeah, so, thank you.
One last thing to say about payroll processing. The IRS, as people know it by now, but, but many people are confused by it and are calling our call center. The IRS changed some tax laws on withholdings, beginning January 1, 2023. So no longer are their minimum withholdings or efficient withholdings. And with that, we've had a lot of call volume. We changed all our forms. We converted, we had a transitional period, but still a lot of questions, which is probably the primary call driver for member services right now. We did a good, I felt we did a good job with communicating that in our self-service module, but not everybody gets to self-service. So we're going to work on a social media campaign as well, really trying to get ahead of it and recognize that these things are confusing when you are aware of them.
Questions for Rick, and then we'll go to Tanya. Any questions, either by phone or in the, in the room here? Two things I just want to add before we go on is that, as it relates to payroll processing, I said it yesterday, I'll say it today, and I'll say it tomorrow. I'm deeply concerned about some of the payroll processing software programs that are being rolled out at local school systems. I'm concerned. And the situation in my life, if you underpay or overpay anyone, three, 400 bucks, you put them in a financial vortex that it takes them forever to get out of. Underpaying people or overpaying people, they're both equally bad. Because we have to come back, Tony, trying to get that money, and people aren't budgeted for that. So I'm wearing two hats today as a chairman of this board of three state treasurer and as the member of the Department of Public Instruction calls. I, I think they get it, but I don't think they, this is a big deal. And I think people in this room who are nodding their heads know this is a big deal. Especially when it didn't go right here, and we're, now we're getting ready to do it in a system that's 20 times larger. And every time this happens with one of these software systems, and the two that you'll probably be hearing most about are Cherry Road and Tyler Technologies. Every time you hear about it, people blame this department. They light up your call center because they think we are the problem. We get emails about why have I not credited, why have we not credited somebody's orbit account with their pension credit? Well, in some cases, it's because we haven't gotten pension contributions since May. So if somebody's going to look at these numbers, and when people retire, somebody's going to retire in June, and let's say they worked in a school system where they had a couple of different jobs, where they got funded from a couple of different things, like they, they had been a teacher, but then they drove a school bus during the summer school. I mean, they, they, everybody looks at us as to why there's a problem. The problem is, we're not getting the information in this building because these computer systems are not cured. I know that was pretty emotional statement by me, but it's serious. It's serious when we get bugged out because somebody else didn't do their job. And I don't like that. Yes, what is the solution? The solution is that before the legislature mandates that somebody should buy something, or DPI should look at something, or implement something, that they actually talk to the people who do the work, all the ground, in the school districts, and get everything G-hauling. Measure five times, cut once, think inside the box, outside the box. And then when you figure out what direction you're going to go in, you got to use those sides of the box. But that really hasn't happened. Secondly, I'm just going to say what's on my heart. All these firms overpromise and underdeliver. And when they overpromise and underdeliver, it's typically the low and fixed income people in these systems that get hurt the worst. And lastly, when somebody calls them out on it, no, no offense to anyone. I wish I were a green bean. I'm not a green bean anymore. But they send green beans in to try to fix these very serious, complicated problems. When they don't really have a, they just parachute in and try to fix this problem. These are serious, serious problems. That's my solution. People from the London others may have other thoughts on this, but it's, it's serious. When you don't pay somebody properly, I can tell you about what month of what year this happened. My mother in the seventies, it is, and there wasn't that much going on in the seventies as far as all this stuff. But it was just, it was a vortex. So just to add something on that, from an operational standpoint, you're building a new system, and it's done, and it's not right. I have to dedicate my staff to help you fix it. If I'm dedicated to helping you fix the problems that I didn't know in advance, that I'm not working on the problems that I know I have with the other systems that's reporting. That creates trickle-down effect that's impactful to the entire system, many more people. We have a handful of people out there, seven people, seven people handling all of those. So it's, it's very impactful, very important, communicating an outreach, asking employers who intend to change system to provide us with at least 60 days and help us work, allow for us to work with them more closely to get it right the first time, if possible. Starting with the system requirements, which typically are never even communicated to us on the front end. When you figure, trying to figure out what kind of card.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Treasurer, just to reiterate what you're saying. I, I believe it was last October, I was sitting in a meeting where we had an update about where we're with two companies. And when you sit and you see a lot of those numbers, can't help but understand exactly what the treasurer was saying. We're talking about people's funding, we're talking about their money, their budgeting. And, and, and even just as recent as this, we talked to somebody from another county across the state, how that affects them when looking at retirement, when that information isn't in there. And so you're talking about, and we all in this room know, we're talking about real people, real issues, real budgets. And I, I just echo the words of the treasurer. We, we've got to find a way, and I was waiting for exactly what you were saying, is how to fix it. It's going to take some time because it's, it's affecting the people across the state.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Treasurer. This is F. Moore. Can we, can you, or you, through the board, take some penalty actions? Entities that sometimes will force them to take the action.
I think your question was, can this board take an action or, or, or say something as a board that would, could possibly penalize these software developers and implementers to penalize them for their actions of the unfunded mandate that they're putting on the time and effort apart?
Well, and not only the entities themselves, they're the ones responsible for the contract.
Right. Look into that. I, because of twenty hats that I wear, I try as often as I can to get into closed sessions of the State Board of Education where a lot of these things are discussed. And it's, I don't know, it's heartbreaking. And Oliver talked about, and I talked about paychecks. We're talking about people who like, had planned to retire, and their orbits, things aren't. Two different numbers there.
I just had a question. Sarah Collins of the League of Business colleagues, obviously, this doesn't affect our members yet, but our members do switch payroll technologies from time to time. And I know we haven't seen any problems, but this sounds like such a disaster. If there's ever any warning we can give to our members of appropriate actions to take when bedding a payroll software vendor, I would love to get this to them because I don't want this problem creeping over into our members' payroll processing. So just let us know if there's some, like, what to look up for best practices when switching payroll vendors.
Well, the most ineligible question you can ask a potential vendor is, have you ever been divorced and why? It has nothing to do with this. It has to do with who they've done business with that they're now divorced from and why. You'd be shocked at some of the responses you'll get, because that's a direct question. Who were you married to professionally with one of these programs that you got divorced from? Second question, which I'm asking a lot of, because people, I hear and see a lot of things, is that when I start hearing that somebody that we're married to with one of these systems has made some corporate decision to kind of get out of the governmental business, that's hugely concerning, because now we're married to somebody who's building this system, and they're, they're going to be AWOL. So, and the way that I found that out, Sarah, is when I ask them why they're not bidding up the next one. If this is so good for Lenda, why are they not bidding up for Blake and Margaret? And that's when you learn, oh, we're, we're kind of pulled back from this. And that is even the worst situation. Yes?
Yeah, I can, I can add what you said, and that's what I was thinking. Thank you for bringing that up. I think we need to work with our partners to address that in advance with, with the league and also with the County Commissioners Association. And actually make that as part of the, like, a conference, picking out one of the sessions that they have to talk about. Here's challenges that we have for our employees and how, how to address this upfront proactively. Because this, this is a problem, and it's not going the way until we find a way to educate those folks out there to making those decisions. Because, just because it's the cheapest, it's not always the best option because it's obviously problems that have been caused.
Can you evaluate and come up with an approved list or recommended list of vendors or even a bad list? That's a great point, and I'll call Representative Hurley for a moment. But as I said earlier, and maybe I'm speaking a little bit out of tune, but sometimes these things, I, I would say they're legislatively mandated, but, you know, too often I hear, and I think other people in this room hear, well, we're doing this because the legislature told us to do. And sometimes that's accurate, and sometimes it's not accurate. So I, I think that all the suggestions you brought up are, are great suggestions. And, you know, I've found the courage recently, you know, to speak to the head of the AOC. I mean, the head of the AOC is getting ready to roll out a system. They didn't, they didn't line it up, did they? Like. And so now, are we talking about payroll in this instance? Hey, I was going to call Ted. With AOC, we're talking about child support, domestic violence order, court things. I mean, that's a, this is a big deal, but that's also a big deal when you roll out that system and it's not ready to go. So I've told Director Heath on a couple of occasions, I don't know if he really wants to hear it or not. I said, you just got to make sure this thing is, is ready to ride when you crank it up.
Mr. Treasurer, thanks. I'll just say, I have been involved in several modernization projects. When I retired from state government in 2017, from DES, we were currently working on a project. And the answer, my judgment, simply just don't be in a hurry. If, if your legacy system is working, just trust and verify. Don't assume anything. Don't assume because somebody has a title of a developer or architect or whatever that, that you're just going to just buy into whatever they tell you. It's not necessarily true. Second opinions aren't bad from other developers that you have some experience with. And get a second, get a second opinion if it costs you money. I went to work with a private vendor after I retired that was doing a modernization project for another state. And as a subject matter expert-type person or an analyst-type person, I went there. And after just a little while being there, I found out that what they were telling that state was, we already have a base product developed. All we need to do is configure our base product to your state-specific needs. There was no base product. And then it became an inside joke with that company. You know, we were asked, going, talking to the people at the state says, what do you need here? And then we tell them, they, they would, I wouldn't tell them. Then they would tell them, yeah, that will configure to our base product. A base product didn't even exist. They were developing behind the scenes while they were dealing with the state. So you can get that. There's plenty of good software companies, there's plenty of good people. But there's no reason to be in a hurry if your legacy system is working. It's my advice.
Sorry, I know we got bugged out.
Sorry, Fat Hurley, we have this problem all over our state and all agencies just about because you don't work with those who work with it. Like, you've got to have your exact stakeholders to tell these programmers and these companies what you actually truly need and make sure it works. We have wasted taxpayer dollars all over the state to sometimes have nothing when you get through paying out millions of bits. Our contracts have to be fallback or have to be timely, and we have to. And we have to be sure that this is done right. And it's very important that you communicate and have your people on board and know exactly what you need. There are programmers out here that can do exactly what you need, just regular programmers, not a big system that you buy. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank you for coming down there after the last meeting. You know, I had heard from other people that you did get those calls and that you actually had gone down there. And so, I think that was really important and gave you a better idea probably of what was going on. And I know, I think Sam said, I think it was in Gaston County, that all this, there was only one person left in Gaston County in their, in their office that could actually work with this payroll and make these corrections. So, what my-
The new system.
Yeah, the new system.
My person left with the new system.
With the new system, all the other people quit because it was such a pain. And so, then all these people left, they got one poor person working on the whole thing. But what I see is a potential lawsuit here. I don't know who, or at Johnson, I'm not an attorney. But something needs to be done, I would think, to stop these companies right down their tracks because I don't think they're really probably fixing it. I mean, are they making it any better?
Everybody knows I'm not the IT person.
Well, yeah, and I'm not either. But also, I just thought about, maybe we have lists of vendors not to use because they have had difficulty. And of course, you'd have to have some grounds for how you put them on there. They really screwed this whole thing up and messed up people's lives.
They're getting ready to go to bigger systems. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. I know we're going to keep on.
No, it's okay. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Brian Prophet. I'm the Vice President of North Carolina Association of Educators. I appreciate the opportunity. This is my first time attending the meeting. And I just wanted to reiterate for folks in Gaston County, like Linda just mentioned, our members have been dealing this for a year now. And you named, you know, the problem that your mother had with a paycheck in the 1970s. Our folks have been dealing with it now for an entire year of dealing with it. And so, I'm encouraged to hear that there's some thinking about how these problems might be preventable in the future. But I really, really would love to ask folks to think about exploring this question further of what actions can be taken right now. Because our folks have been doing literally everything that they can to raise attention to this and still nothing is happening. And so, it seems like there is going to be, need to be some kind of extraordinary measure that's taken by some people in position authority that don't seem like they're doing it yet. So, I would love to encourage the board to think further about what kind of action can be taken because our folks are really, really hurting. And as y'all know, it's hard enough to get people to work in school systems right now as it is, who are already not getting paid a whole lot. And now they've been dealing with a year of, some of them not getting paid at all for months on end. So, thanks for the recognition and I appreciate that.
Blake, to say that there are penalties for late reports. Go ahead, you say.
No, so I think you probably know this better than me these days. But I was just going to ask if maybe we could take up at the next meeting. I won't be here, Barbara will be here. But what, what kind of penalties in existing statutory authority can be used to help deal with this problem? And any changes that could be made from a statutory perspective that could maybe deal with it on a more systematic basis?
Great idea. So, there are penalties and there's significant penalties. One of the problems we have, like, some of these school systems, I won't name any of them, is it's based on their payroll not reported to us. So, until it gets reported, we don't know what it is. So, they've not paid May, June, July, August, September, October. We don't know what the penalties are, but the ones, as soon as they start reporting, they get big penalties. And then the school system is not left with pay. So, it is happening, there are penalties. But, you know, it's, this problem is still going on.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. And I think that we all spoke with our stomachs and our hearts, our minds. I had the audacity as a freshman member of the General Assembly to try to pass a law that would do what all of you now do, which is to pay the registration of your vehicle with the property tax in one envelope. Very successful, especially for public school and volunteer fire department funding. But I've worked with Governor Easley and Ellen Matt. And the requirements of that system, that we're talking about, 27 million cars, 113 school systems, 200 or 300 fire departments, 100 counties, 453 cities, and 10 million citizens. So, it's not, that's not nothing. And I was out on my bicycle one night and went up Fable Street because I knew where this quote computed, this people who had been on this contract, I knew where they were. And so, it was like 12 o'clock at night. I was out, I went up in there and this is where they were doing all these requirements. And I literally, the requirements of this system were like this tall, you stack the papers up. I mean, that's how tall. So, I went in, I said, hey, what are you doing? And they said, well, we're working on this system. I said, how's it looking? And they said, this is never going to work. I mean, for the person to know who I was, never going to work. And to Governor Easley's credit, I was in the minority party and I went and I said, sir, we've worked together on this, but it's too important not to be able to, maybe not to be able to make it happen. And to his credit, we got rid of that vendor. He hired a group over in Durham, I think, called Farragut Systems. Just a small boutique shop and they came in and made it happen. And this year, it was solding at $200 million, $4, property taxes being collected. All that money goes to cities, counties, volunteer fire departments. So, my point is, is that even when you do everything you're supposed to do, sometimes you got to have the courage to realize that this thing ain't working out. Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Good job.
Good morning. This morning, I'm going to be doing some highlights, Member Services, which composes of both the Education Retirement Community Bullis Call Center. I'm going to be doing some highlights because I know Patrick is here to do all that good stuff.
And I apologize to the board for putting this off schedule. It was important, though.
So, we're going to start with the first slide, which is our Education Retirement Group Correspondence Team. So, from last year to this time, we were over seven days of turnaround time to respond to correspondence. And I'm proud to say we were able to get that down to four days at the end of the year. We did have a spike in November with our turnaround times almost doubling. We had some correspondence, some old correspondence that we didn't know that was there. We had some new staff come over, so we had to go and fix those, which turned, no, reduced our turnaround times. But we was able to recover and get that back on track. We have had, over the last three months, from October to December, I'm proud to say we have responded to over 16,000 pieces of correspondence. And within our average turnaround time of 4, over four days. And for the, and we have continued to stay on that track with responding to correspondence that's coming in, which could consist of someone mailing an inform, someone mailing in something for legal, bro affidavit, some, any sort of type of mail we've been able to respond to and get it forth, get something back to them within four days. In our email, we have... Okay, in our emails, we have reduced our turnaround times by five to seven days and we've been able to bring that down from one to two days. A lot of this have to do with, with cross-training both the call center and the ERG, which is our Education Retirement Group. We shoveling on resources. So, when the counselors in the Education Retirement Group has to assist the call center when high-volume days, the call center in return to work to help respond to emails because their skill set is some of the same. They just take calls in the call center and the Education Outreach Group speak to members, do virtual appointments or webinars. So, they have the same skill set to, they have to help each other and that's what we've done in Member Services to try to make sure that we're responding to members and a quick map. So, the visitors and counseling sessions that we've had... Sorry for that. We must stay on this one. So, the group meetings and webinars, from fiscal year to date, we have had over 3,000 members in attendance and 298 employers. We have trained five additional counselors to be able to help conduct more training webinars and create videos, working with our Communications Department, Kristy, to help educate members and employers on all things retirement. And that's what we see on this slide right here. And this has also helped improve the knowledge of Education Outreach Group to be able to conduct those webinars and partner with Education, Communication, and Prisay as well as our boardroom. Right now, we are still taking appointments virtual and by telephone, but we have opened up our front office to receive members that need to drop off forms, notify forms, and also drop off checks or anything like that. We didn't want anyone to feel like they were not supported in any kind of way or dropping up here and wanting to speak to someone even if they didn't have an appointment. We do encourage everyone to take an appointment so that we can speak with them individually, privately. But if someone comes in and drops off a form or needs something to notify them, we will not turn them away.
And this is not the most efficient way to offer our services, but when you're able to give a shoulder, shoulder hug to a widow who unexpectedly lost her husband, it was just really important for her to come in. And so, you can't put, you can't match with that. And that might be yesterday's.
Over the past three months, we have conducted over 203 appointments and we have received over 468 messages in our front office. So, I think with this having our front office open, you know, we're not doing it, but in personal appointments, we're still being able to suggest quite a few.
And while we're sitting there, they're actually doing other work as if they were in the call center when no one's in the front.
When there's no one in there, they actually respond to that. So, I suppose I've got a little bit out of what, but I've kind of covered our correspondence, our webinars and our appointments. So, before I move into our call center and our average speed of answering calls that we're receiving today, will I have any questions?
That is?
I'm going to go over this.
Okay, good.
I apologize for the confusion.
I think the slides are just in a different, a different slide, a different order.
Yeah, they are.
But that's okay. So, in the call center, we have been very busy as usual. We've had some staff transition over to the operations team and we're actually happy about that because the knowledge that they took over to the operations team is going to help move some of the things that we're going to go up with and need in this team. So, we've done a lot of promoting again. It has cost us to lose a couple of staff members, but we didn't lose completely. We actually gained, we just gained it in a different department. So, we're steadily recruiting. We work with HR and Deborah has been very helpful with us with the tables posting, keeping an eye on those posters and, you know, the amount of people that's applied. They know where to take it down so each applicant can be viewed. So, we're continuously posting and recruiting and hiring to beef up our staff. But with the small staff we have, we have been doing well with that. In the late September, we went live with a new phone platform called NICE as well as we redesigned our IVR, our integrated voice response system, which has shown to be a positive thing for our members. Over the last 90 days, over 116,000 calls came through our IVR system, which 55% of those members were able to receive the system without moving forward, holding to speak to a counselor that speaks volumes to Reach Group because what they can receive in the IVR is pending statuses or refunds and or retirement. So, we are proud to say that people were able to receive that information right through our IVR, having things updated without even having to move over to speak to someone in the call center. Within the NICE platform, we have a callback assist function that allows the member to opt, option to continue to hold the phone or select to be called back while keeping that place secure. That's proven positive for us well because it's more than busy and because we're having peak call volumes, people are able to still keep their place in line, continue without delay. And it also keeps us from having to abandon that phone call. So, we're still getting service to members without inconvenience. So, we're very proud of that. From October to December, we have, we have serviced over 11,000 members to call back messages. And our ban rate has decreased from over 15% to, in October, to over 10, down to 10% in December. The average speed of answering and random rates are the lowest in almost two years from December 2020. The email and correspondence turnaround times are the lowest in almost three years. So, I'm very proud of the work that we're doing in Member Services and that we are, you know, servicing members sometimes from large Florida where we want it to be. But I'm still proud of the work that we're doing. I think the partnership between Member Services Operations has proven to be effective with getting things out to the members as quickly as possible. And that's being able to respond to members as quickly as possible from making different changes within his processes.
Tanya and I are joined at the hip, both of us, we understand there's, it's all about the member. Any call she's getting, I need to know what it is, why it is, so I can figure out if there's a process in place that's bad, what we need to do. Because everything she, her call center gets is a result of something we've either done or not done. That's the bottom line. I don't surrender easily, but when they, when the two of them come to me with a solution, I just... And Tanya, thank you, gratitude, those are great numbers. Obviously, but maybe 15 minutes before the next board meeting, maybe take a few of you at a time to walk through the call center. Ted Brand worked with Tanya, Rick and Tom to reconfigure the call center to get people, they were just packed on top of each other in there, to give them a little better experience, which we thought would help us with recruiting call center specialists. So, maybe before the next meeting, anybody wants to just run through this door, visualize our call centers.
I just want to say, you know, this week has been extremely busy with payday. I've been very impressed with the team. They've added some new staff on the phones to help. But the training department is now helping. Everyone's pitching in. The team leads, the supervisors, they're answering emails. Yesterday, they bought pizza for everybody and worked through lunch. I mean, they're busy and I know it's taking an hour to get through right now. But they're doing everything they can to help people. They got the callback assist and we've been trying to balance that because some of the calls and callback assists, you know, if you leave a callback assist on, we might be here till midnight answering all the calls. So, they've been, they've been doing everything they can to try to help each other. And it's been fantastic work they've been doing this week. It may not always show, you may hear complaints, but they really are working hard to try and satisfy our members the best they can.
This is my counter from yesterday. Do you see pizza on there anywhere?
There's some left, it's sitting on the table.
Paul is just three days old, it's finally noon.
Not at all at this point. I just want to congratulate those two departments because I find it interesting. I don't know what we're doing around customer service or what training we're actually doing. But when I talk to folks across the state that are retiring, they're talking after they talk to the folks in the call center. And it's like they're talking to a best friend. You know, I'm talking to them, they're calling, the individual's by the first name. They know I spoke to this person, she or he has given me the information. So, making it personable that when our members are calling, they're talking to people and they're having a great conversation with people. So, thank you to both of those departments because they may not call, you know, Treasurer Farley until something's over, but they're calling you and they're getting the answer. So, appreciate the team for all their work.
But I've said before, nobody calls us to book a cruise. They call us because they've had a life-changing event. Mostly good, some bad. And also, for the new board members, I've got nearly a billion people on this plan now. Treat everybody equally. There typically are two groups that get to break in line, hospice and killing the line of duty. Because once somebody passes away, we are stuck with the words on paper. And anything we can do, especially in a hospice situation, to make sure people's affairs are in order before that happens, is those two people get to jump in line. Obviously, killing the line of duty as far as getting benefits processed so that they can get on with their life. It's not the right terminology, but you know what I mean. All right, good job. That was Max Wierle Joy.
Good morning, everyone. This is Patrick Kenlaw. I am Director of Policy Planning and Compliance for the Retirement Systems. And our team works to ensure the long-term health and sustainability of the retirement system. It's a real pleasure to work every day with Tanya and Rick and be part of their problem-solving processes, what we try to do every day. They and their teams have just been doing phenomenal work. I do have a number of updates this morning that are important for you to know for later on in this meeting as well as beyond. So starting with page 17, this is about the investment experience that the retirement systems had during 2022. You might remember from our meeting last quarter that at that time, the estimated year-to-date return through the first nine months of 2022 was negative 13.7%. Now that we have completed 2022, we have an estimate from our Investment Management Division, which is only an estimate, and it could change as numbers are refined. But their estimate is that the investment return for the full calendar year was negative 10.4%. That is better than the negative 13.7%, where we were standing back on September 30. But as we've talked about before, the negative 10.4% should be compared to the expected return of the boards, which is positive 6.5%. And relatively speaking, that's a loss of about 17%. And it should be understood that the capital market environment in 2022 was very bad for everyone. Those of you with 401Ks or other investments, you know this. It appears the negative 10.4% return during 2022 is going to be favorable to most other pension plans when their final numbers for 2022 come in. And that's because North Carolina's investments are, generally speaking, more conservative than those of other systems. For example, if the funds were invested entirely in the United States stock market, as measured by the S&amp;P 500 index, the return would have been about negative 18% instead of negative 10.4. And one major consulting firm, which works mostly with private pension plans, estimated that their clients, on average, returned negative 19% during the year, which is similar to that. So this page puts that experience in terms of dollar figures. I'll focus on the teasers column and explain what those numbers mean, but for the other columns on this page, the general theme is going to be the same. Let's start with the number on the first row. For teasers, that's negative $14.7 billion. That's my estimate of when you look at the funding plan that would have existed at the end of 2021, assuming that the fund could achieve 6.5% return during 2022. What's the difference of where we are today based on what actually was experienced in terms of market value during 2022? And the difference is $14.7 billion. On the next line, when you look at that impact on the market value of assets compared to how much the actuaries say, quote unquote, "should be" in the fund, which is funded percentage, that's going to be a decline of 15 percentage points eventually. So in terms of the official measure, where we were just over 90% last year for both the state and local retirement systems, we're not expecting to see that drop to 75% immediately, just based on this one year. That's because investment returns, whether they are favorable or unfavorable compared to the board's assumption, they're recognized by the actuaries gradually over five. And during that five-year period, you're also recognizing some gains that happened from the past. There's time for the state to put in some funding. So we don't expect the percentage, based on current projections, to drop all the way to 75%. Buck will show you some details on that later.
And that five-year amortization is much more conservative than a lot of other states who do it over 10, 12-year.
So this particular measure of five years is pretty consistent with other states. When we develop an unfunded liability that's actually recognized, North Carolina amortizes it or pays it down over 12 years, and that is more aggressive.
Could I ask a quick question?
You first. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, did the market, did the market correct that in the last quarter?
Yes, I believe that was Mr. Morse, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so as of September 30, the estimated returns through the first nine months were negative 13.7. And as of December 31, it became negative 10.4. So there was a bit of an improvement during the fourth quarter.
And there's been a future improvement this year.
Mr. Kenlaw, I just want to understand the relationship of that 50% number here. So what's on Buck's slide four in the next set of presentations? So on that slide, looks like we've got the blue line indicates, if I understand right, the projections for the ratio of the plan. We have the 10.5% loss from this last calendar year, and it looks to me like it's going down there from 90.0% to 87.1%. So help me understand the difference between the 15% number here and that 2.9% reduction that's on this slide.
Sure. Thanks for that question, Mr. Thomas. And I will ask the folks from Buck behind me, Mike Ribble, if I say anything wrong, to at least kick me. So what's happening there, Mr. Thomas, is that you have to compare this relative to the other line of the projection, which is the plan that the projection would have been in place had the fund been able to achieve 6.5% return in 2022 and every other year. And what you see is over the first five years, where there's a difference widening there, 2022, you see a little difference widening out, but 2026, you see a much bigger difference. And that much bigger difference is about 18 percentage points between 87.1 and 105.4. And that 18 is comparable to the 15 percentage point that we see today. The only difference is the point in time, which is you get returns on the money, which makes a bigger difference over five years later. Does that help? And I haven't been kicked, so I stand by that answer. One question that the boards consider every year is whether there were investment gains submitted to fund a benefit increase. The board's current policies for both the state and local systems describe that any benefit increase should be funded by increased contributions during the term of these policies, not investment gains. The investment experience from 2022 underscores that reality. Back in October, the consulting actuaries presented some final measurements at the end of 2021, which you can see them on this page around the middle of the page. And that was before what happened during 2022. So these numbers showed that during 2021, teasers recognized $2.1 billion in investment gains, but that even after recognizing those gains, teasers was still underfunded by $9.2 billion on the official measurement. Now that we've been through 2022, we know the last two numbers, the last two rows of this column, which are on top of the $9.2 billion unfunded liability that existed at the end of 2021, now teasers is expected to recognize investment losses of $1.6 billion in 2022 and scheduled to recognize $7.9 billion of losses during the four years after that. There will be some time for the state to get started on funding that loss before it's all recognized in the official measurements. But even given that time, the actuaries are still projecting that the unfunded liability will grow from $9.2 billion to more than $13 billion by the end of 2026. For the local system, the story is similar as what's shown on this slide, and all of this assumes no further benefit improvements, and it assumes the investment returns can achieve 6.5% and every year starting in 2023. So again, this data underscores what the state and local funding policies already provide, which is that any benefit improvements should be funded through increased employer contributions. That's page 17. Another question.
Is it appropriate to compare the $2.1 billion gain from calendar year 2021 to the $1.6 billion loss that you have here for calendar year 2022? And why?
Yes, Mr. Thomas. So 2021, the $2.1 billion is the amount that was recognized in the actuarial value of assets, the official measurement, as investment gains, which reflected some of the market returns during 2021, 2020, 2019, 18, 17, all five years. So comparable to that, what's expected to be recognized in 2022 is a loss of $1.6 billion for five parts of the five. That wasn't me, for the record. And then we expect what's scheduled in to be recognized in 2023 and later is another 7.9. Moving to page 18, one of our team's responsibilities is to administer invoices when retirement benefits exceed the contribution-based benefit cap. This is what's commonly known as the anti-pension spiking law. This page shows the cumulative invoice activity since 2015. As you can see, since 2015, the retirement systems had issued invoices related to 607 separate retirements, averaging about 76 per year. During that time, the retirement systems had invoiced more than $62 million to employers and have collected more than $50 million. Moving to page 19, there are a number of miscellaneous items in the policy and compliance world that you should know about from this past quarter. First, there was significant retirement legislation enacted by the federal government in December. It was part of the Omnibus Consolidated Appropriations Act, and it is called the Secure 2.0 Act. I believe that stands for setting every community up for retirement. And it follows up on something called the Secure Act from 2019. Most of the meaningful provisions from the Secure 2.0 Act for us have to do with defined contribution plans, like the 401K and 457 programs. But there are two provisions that are significant for plans like teasers and the local system. The first of those is a change in the required minimum distribution age. So up until 2022, former employees had to take distributions from the plan by April 1st after the calendar year when you turn 72. For people who turn 72 starting this year, 2023, the required age is going to be delayed to age 73, which gives people a little more flexibility. And that's going to be changed to age 75 by 10 years from now. The second change in the Secure 2.0 Act that we're taking a look at is a change in federal law related to overpayments, which are situations where someone receives money they were not entitled to receive. Specifically, this law relates to inadvertent overpayments, where the recipient does not have any responsibility due to misrepresentations, misstatements, or knowing that they weren't entitled to. The legislation clarifies that under federal law, retirement plan sponsors now have more discretion in how to handle inadvertent overpayments. This does not immediately affect our systems because, according to North Carolina law, we still have an affirmative obligation to pursue recovery of all overpayments in full. However, we will be looking at possible recommendations to the legislature that could recognize flexibility created by the Secure 2.0 Act and balance it with what is running for our retirement systems. Next on the list, we'd like to briefly describe four items that are in the appendix to today's materials. First, you have a report from the actuarial firm Gabriel Roder Smith, or GRS. They were engaged by another state agency to conduct a review of the actuarial assumption methods and processes performed by Buck for the retirement systems and those performed by Segal Consulting for the Retiree Health Benefit Fund. The document in the meeting materials is their report on the assumptions and the processes. Although the report was prepared for a different agency, not our office, we were pleased to see that GRS found the work was done in accordance with government accounting standards and actuarial standards of practice. They found that the assumptions and methods used in the valuation were reasonable. Second, you have a link to the state of North Carolina's 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which was published in December. The report is lengthy. You have a link to it in the appendix. In particular, Note 12 of the report describes the effect of retirement plans on the state's financial reporting. And there are several tables of required supplemental information later on in the report with further details on the retirement systems, including years of historical data. Department of State Treasurer staff provided information to assist the Office of State Controller in developing the report, and if you have any questions, staff will be glad to answer them or direct you to the right sources. Third, you have a memo related to reemployment earnings. Some retirees of the state and local system are later re-employed by an employer in the same retirement system in a job that does not require that they earn memberships, like a part-time job. And this is an update on the limit of the dollar amount that they can earn or the increase in what they can earn in that job without an impact on their retirement. Fourth, you have a document called Teasers July 28, 2022 Minutes with additional detail requested. At the last meeting in October, the State Board approved the minutes from July, subject to the minutes being amended to quote a public comment in full, and the minutes attached in the appendix incorporate that change. Finally, here on page 19, again, there are two final items to make you aware of. The first is that the consulting actuarial firm Buck Global announced in December that they have entered into an agreement to be acquired by Arthur J. Gallagher and Company, better known as Gallagher. They expect the acquisition to close in the next few months. Gallagher is a global insurance brokerage, risk management, and consulting firm. Buck has assured us that there will be no change in their team or the services they provide. We're hoping the biggest change will be just calling them Gallagher from now on, which will require less vigilance when I try to pronounce it. The final point on page 19 is to make you aware of some consulting outreach we're doing to employing units in the retirement systems about something we've talked about before in these meetings. This is the possible effect on retirement benefits when a retiree returns to public employment. There isn't always an effect on their benefits, depending on the situation, but when there is one, and the retiree wasn't aware of what they were getting into, consequences can be devastating to retirees and their families. It could include the loss of all retirement benefits and health insurance premiums, including retroactive and the prospective loss of health coverage. These situations are among the most difficult that we encounter in administering retirement benefits. One of the themes that has come up recently is retirees and employing units not being completely aware of the requirements that have to be met in order for someone to retire in the first place. That includes that you must have no prearrangement to work after retirement for an employer in the same retirement system, which the IRS has described as making an independent, personal decision to permanently sever the employer-employee relationship without any reemployment prearrangement. It also requires that you actually terminate employment, and it requires that you perform no work at all during a waiting period, for example, six months for the state system, one month for the local system. The type of work, whether it is full-time, part-time, permanent, temporary, contracted, or on payroll, generally does not matter to these situations. What matters is that the person is doing work at all or has agreed to do work at all. In our contacts with employing units, we are emphasizing this, urging them to understand these requirements about retirement eligibility. And if there are any questions, direct their employees to counselors on the retirement system staff. And we have heard on the brain side some good reports back from situations where people were made known of this through their employers or through organizations and associations here today, and they were able to contact us and work through the situation before it got bad for them.
Any questions? On that last point, we deal with disclosure a lot better than we deal with discovery. You know, once somebody has promised somebody something, or there's been a chance to rehire, and then we find out about it from whatever source, it's just really, really hard to unwind that. And no disrespect, we're probably only talking about very powerful people. Way on them either. So they don't like it very much. So I appreciate the courage and staff. Lastly, very quickly on page 18, it talks about the CBCC, that's the pension spiking. When Sam was giving his report about the buy-in provisions, and I was talking about, you know, invisible winner and visible winner and invisible losers, see that our average invoice for one of these pension spikings is $102,000 per one, per incident. So that's not nothing. Many of you know the situation, just a few miles from here, where a person got $11,000 transferred from his car allowance to his cell phone bill that created a $518,000 increase in his pension over his lifetime. So it's not nothing. Any other questions? Members, we're going to keep rolling. I know that some people need to take it a little rate at the time of time, but I apologize for. Now, for some more actuarial joy. Oh, Lenz, that's your own phone?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
I'm sorry.
Can I hear you?
Yeah.
All right, everybody. The investment advisor, most recently owned in 2022. Please keep in mind that it's close to four months old, starting to put it in the proper context. Committee owned by Jeff Smith and Chris Morris, who may be up to speed on the performance of entirety of assets under management on behalf of the state, as well as assets. As of September 20th, total assets under management, 61.6 billion, down 5.4 billion or two. Valuation of our assets valued at 404 at the end of quarter three was down from 110 to 9 billion at the end of quarter two, reported losses of just over 5 billion, roughly 4.5%. If we take a look at the retirement system, hopefully our benchmark, we formed our benchmark in a 12-year, average three, 15- and 20-year window. So we continue to track success there. Well, we did see a 29% in quarter, and 11.6% for 12-year-long patient benchmarks, 8% over the same period. In regards to our asset allocation, the system remained underweight 46% versus the target of 55%, and overweight rates of 40% of the targeted. Their lives are minimizing loss in our success compared to our peers. We did, we were joined by Tom Schibert on the senior benchmarking review of summary of the results of the year ended December 2020 to the fact that so review evaluated our cost. So the total investment on the retirement system for 2021 was 28.3 basis points compared to a peer minimum of 23 basis points, which is just outstanding. This ranks our retirement system after all, measured by C.
Let, Lenz, can you just speak up a little bit more?
Everybody getting echo? Are you all getting an echo?
Don't know which end is on. Go ahead, Lenz.
Okay, I was just going to give the value of the plan currently. And at the end of the year 2022, the retirement plan stood at 1.9.3 billion, which put us at a loss of 10% for the year. But we have had a strong 23, portfolio of a little more than 3% in January, and a current approximate market value of 112.5 billion. And with that, that concludes my remarks. Glad to open up for any questions.
Any questions? Lenz, thank you. I apologize.
I'd like to offer a written resolution at this point. The written resolution, I can hand it out here. It's a little bit lengthy. It asks for some specific written information to be provided to trustees at future meetings. If folks would rather take a break, read it, recess, I totally understand that, but glad to offer that.
Is this something that you shared with us ahead of time? Is there any reason for that?
I think that this has been asked for verbally in past meetings.
Is it relates to this part of the agenda, or what is it? Is anybody on the board seen?
Where can we ask for it now?
The board members that are on the line, they can't see this resolution. We'll need to find a way to get to them this, this resolution, and I'd be happy to read it aloud to those who are on the line.
Is this a resolution when you were the general counsel here that you? Reason for that?
Well, if you'd like to have a discussion of this, we could go through and start that now informally, or we can do that if there's a sec.
I would appreciate the courtesy of talking to me about it before the meeting. So I think we all would have here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As a board member, I don't, I don't have the time to do this. If he wants to present a resolution, it needs to be added to the agenda and maybe address it at the next meeting. But I'm not comfortable getting something without having prior chance to do that.
And from my standpoint, I'd be happy to have this added to the agenda for the next meeting. If we can talk about it now, we'll do that. But I would like to answer your question. I think you questioned my integrity there, sir, so I'd like to just quickly respond to that.
And when I question your integrity, I will tell you.
Okay. So to your, your point about whether this is something I'm just general counsel, the point of this resolution is to get some information that historically, under any treasurer, going back, I think, all the way to Harlan Boils, has not always been provided in the way to members of this board in a way that helps them make their decisions. It is hard being on this side of the table, frankly, different from what I thought it would be when I was on that side of the table. So this asks for future materials provided to the members of the Board of Trustees, to be given a chart that compares COLAs and pension supplements to inflation. It asks for estimates about whether or not investment gains, what the investment gains will be in future years. And it asks for a discussion of the relative investment performance of this fund compared to other state pension plans, as well as the relative fee savings of this fund compared to other pension plans, so that the folks on this board can understand the fuller context for the things that Mr. Tim Law was talking about earlier today. And I know that these are some things that are already provided in a different form to the Investment Advisory Committee, but this would be a more thorough process. I tried to put here enough time so that there could be a conversation about implementation and have an opportunity to avoid creating through a board resolution something that would take an enormous amount of time for staff.
Well, without objection, we'll land us to the next agenda. So, yes. If you have any.
No, I was, oh, he said he withdrawing.
I'm happy to withdraw if it's add to the next agenda without objection. Thank you.
I just remember the, the chart that I was showing everybody sometime last summer, I guess, and related to Representative Hurley's bill comparing the different states. And you said there were differences in these other states. And maybe his information, I mean, I just glanced over this, would help us to get information behind here about why some of these states can grant these reoccurring COLAs and we can't. Make sure that we can gain some information. And you're going to be able to get the research, and I know people in the General Assembly will help, they're really good at that. So maybe, so I think maybe some other things can come out of here.
Great. Sorry about that.
Morning, trustees. Thank you, Mike, Robert Buck. Back in October, we presented some projections on contribution rates for the teasers plan. We discussed, well, I drew in my fingers what it would look like if it was a minus 13.7% return. We actually presented 6.5% return and a minus 6.5% return, maybe one of us. And now, the best estimate now is minus 10.4% return. So that, having said that, as Patrick mentioned, we're going to update the projections. Beth walked through that, starting on slide three, the updated projections.
Core slide over. Perfect. All right. So as Mike just mentioned, this is Beth Wiley. As Mike just mentioned, this is an update to what we showed you back in October. So the yellow line represents the, what we call the baseline scenario, where we are assuming a 6.5% return every year, including in 2022. So aspirationally, what would have happened? The blue line is the best, based on the best estimate of what has already occurred, where the negative 10.4% return for 2022, but we're assuming a 6.5% return each year thereafter. The purple line is your stable contribution based on the. One thing I will mention about all of these contribution rates is that they reflect the, the base rate, they do not reflect any kind of benefit improvement. So we're not baking that in to these projected contribution rates. So you can see how unfortunately, 2022 was a rough year. It wasn't as bad as negative 13.7%. So there was at least a little bit better than where we were at the last quarter, but in actuality, there was a $14.6 billion loss on your assets, meaning assets were $14.6 billion lower than what we were anticipating. So rather than a declining baseline projection for your contribution rate, we're showing an increase up through 2029, where it peaks at 19.14% of pay, based on the actuarially determined contribution. So where we basically pay off the unfunded liability over a 12-year period, that pretty strong contribution, based on your actually determined contribution policy. The ECRIS, what you actually put into the plan, it showed to actually be pretty strong and helping weather the storm. The ECRIS basically says that you, your contribution is the prior year's appropriation plus 0.35% of payroll, but it can't be lower than your actuarially determined contribution. So your contribution up through 2027 is still in excess of the actuarially determined contribution, but now with the blue line, it is starting to converge. So it's shown to be strong in that it's helping weather the storm, but it's trending in a similar direction. That 19.14% rate is a moving target. We don't know what's going to happen over the coming years, but that if everything happens as expected, that's where you're going to end up. That's all I have on that. If you can move on to the next slide, please. So this slide just shows your projected funded ratio over a 15-year period. The colors are the same as far as their association. The yellow is the baseline scenario, the blue is what's basically already happened for 2022. So you can see on this slide, we're starting out at 9% funded in 2021. That $14.6 billion loss is phased into your assets over a five-year period, which is why you see a slight decline in your funded percentage through 2029, that starts to climb back up there after. Whereas before, the plan would have been over 100% funded in 2024. It's now not over 100% funded over the entire 15-year funding period, which shows how impactful and sensitive your funded percentage is to act performance. That's all I have on that.
Questions? See, thank you.
Was that a whole?
Any questions on the phone?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have one question on the previous slide. If I continue to draw the line, which we look at as a state contribution based on ECRIS, so previous slides. Okay, so, and I look at 2028, we're up to 17.84% and 2029, up to about 18.19. So, so what we're saying, I think I understood, is 2029, the greater of the two is your actual determination. So however, ECRIS would actually go to a 19.14%.
Exactly. Yeah, based on your current policy, you'll still be slightly over it next, the following year, and then it's a flip-flop the next year after.
And then the expectation, we start out, I mean, the peak of the mountain, in theory, we start to down.
It's all the policy.
The policy expires at the end of the line. That's why we didn't draw it further. So we'll know a lot more at that point, so it may be a bigger V if funds don't perform over the next few years, or it may get back down to that line where you're projecting we're even better if we have a recovery. So that's what, you know, the board will be in a better position, and this just shows how well the ECRIS policy is working, because, you know, if we were at this lower blue line and had that Asset General Assembly to march up to 19%, you know, it would be difficult.
I have a question as well. On the funded ratio slide.
Yes, I'm all, thank you.
On the funded ratio slide, can you just provide some context about what these numbers are compared to other plans in the country? How many plan, for instance, you don't have to answer these exact questions, but how many plans are in that 105% plus range that is shown in the orange line on this slide? We get down to 87.1% in 2026, as projected, how would that compare us to other plans now?
I don't have statistics off the top of my head, but I mean, policies of this plan in a certain period, it's with the plan, could shake 9% funded status, you know, you're above median for sure. I would imagine that many plans across the country lost 10% or more if they're more aggressively. So I would think that the projections would also be perhaps below 87% if they were to do that. And as far as 105%, you know, that, if that were to, that 6.5% level, or if we maintain 105%, I would think that would be well above.
And I think just from my memory, I heard what our funded level is. I believe South Carolina is 61%. I think Alabama is about 60%, where the Kentucky retirement system is 30%. And so when Treasurer Bowles left his office, it was 100% funded, I believe. So it had every dollar it would ever need, plus 10 cents on top of that dollar. But unlike others, I actually have given credit to previous state treasurers, starting with Treasurer Moore, who had no control over our country being attacked on 9/11 and this plan losing billions of dollars after that happened. I have actually given credit to Treasurer Cowell, who had nothing to do with the great financial crisis, where this plan lost tens of billions of dollars during that period of time. So this plan has never faced, up until recently, interest rates this low, people retiring this early, living this long. It's math. People don't want to get the math, they want to be political. But at the end of the day, it's not emotional, it's not political, it's mathematical. So I think the participants in this plan, previous trustee boards should be very proud, and legislature who has funded it. and legislature who has funded it, should be very proud of how this plan has weathered since the year 2000.
You got that from mine. This is Patrick Kinlaw again. With this agenda item, we'll be taking into account the projections that Buck just shared, and applying the board's funding policies about for the State Board, what recommendations are available for the board to possibly make to the legislature related to funding and benefits. We'll focus first on the executive summary on the first page, although the materials have additional information for each retirement system. So on the executive summary, it outlines three substantive questions for the boards, for the State Board, to consider are related to the retirement systems under its oversight. The third one will be addressed later in Agenda Item Number 16. So that leaves the first two questions on the executive summary. And just to help you with the lay of the land, the last page of this document, Page 11, has a one-page summary that describes draft baseline recommendations that if the board were to decide not to recommend any benefit enhancements or additional funding to the legislature. And if the board makes recommendations different from that, the board could simply direct staff to make conforming changes to Page 11 before it's communicated to the legislature. So the first question is whether to recommend a one-time or a permanent increase to retirement benefits under teasers, the judicial system, and the legislative system, along with additional funding to provide for the increase. We'll focus on the numbers for teasers, the state system, and then the board's recommendations for the judicial and legislative systems have followed along with that. So for teasers in the upcoming fiscal year, one alternative would be to follow the baseline projection that you just received from Buck. That projection assumes that there would be no further benefit improvement beyond what has already been promised. The employer contribution rate would be 16.44% of pay for the upcoming fiscal year, and it's projected to increase up to 19.14% of pay by fiscal year ending 2029. For the upcoming fiscal year, the 16.44% would represent an increase of $40.1 million in recurring general fund appropriations, and a decrease of $147.6 million in non-recurring appropriations, for an overall general fund requirement of $107.6 million less than the fiscal year that we are in right now. If you look at Page Three of the document, and the two tables about halfway down that page, it would also be consistent with the board's policy to recommend either a permanent COLA, which is the top table, or a one-time supplement, which is the lower table, while also recommending the funding adjustments shown on this table. I'll take the 2% column for illustration, rather than reading you every number. Looking at the top table, if the board recommends a 2% permanent COLA, the actuaries have told us that it would increase the unfunded liability of teasers by about $1.1 billion. That's the 1067. It would require that employer contributions be increased for the next 12 years by 0.82% of pay. So for instance, the 19.14% that we just saw as the peak would be projected now to be about 20%. This would currently equate to $94 million per year for the next 12 years from the general fund. And when including all funding sources, such as the highway fund and employer receipts, it would equate to $145 million per year for 12 years, as the cost. For example, part of the 16.44% employer contribution already expected to be in effect is a result of the 1% permanent COLAs that were provided in 2012, 2014, and 2017, which are still being paid for over their 12-year periods. Looking at the bottom table, if the board recommended a one-time supplement equal to 2% of the annual pension, the actuaries have advised that it would be paid for over the course of a single year by increasing the employer contribution rate by 0.6% of pay for one year only. That would equate to $69 million from the general fund, and $106 million when including all funding sources. So to summarize this part, the board could elect to recommend the 16.44% employer contribution rate with no benefit enhancement, or the board could choose to recommend one of the alternatives on Page Three, along with the associated funding adjustment over 12 years for the top table, or over just one year for the bottom table. Mr. Chair, would you like me to move on to the second question related to the National Guard prior discussion?
Is that okay with the board?
Sure. Okay. The National Guard pension fund alternatives are outlined on Pages Eight and Nine. This fund is in a different place based on the most recent actuarial valuation. There was no unfunded liability. In fact, the fund had a surplus of $23 million on an actuarial value, and $32.5 million on a market value basis at the end of 2021. That surplus was generated in part, in large part, by the continued efforts of the General Assembly to fund the plan at a level of about $11 million per year in recent years, which has been greater than what the actuaries have said was minimally required. The surplus means that based on already promised benefits, the board could choose to reduce the requested appropriation to as little as $0. So at one end of the spectrum, the board could recommend that the General Assembly eliminate its $11 million per year contributions and recommend no benefit increase. Alternately, the board could recommend a benefit improvement as shown on the table on Page Eight. In doing so, the board could technically keep with a request of $0 funding. However, it would seem prudent for the board to request a full amount of the funding for any recommended benefit increase, which is in the full actuarial cost column. This is mainly due to two circumstances. First, what we know about the market experience during 2022. And second, the fact that there are ongoing efforts at the National Guard to clean up historical records about former service members, which could cause a significant change in plan liabilities in either direction. One alternative, which a board member specifically requested, proposed, would be the following. The board could recommend that the General Assembly maintain the funding of $11 million, $11,031,715 per year during the fiscal biennium, which would total about $22 million for two years. That would require no change to the current fiscal year's appropriation during the next biennium. In this scenario, the board would recommend that about $1.5 million of the 22 million biennium funding be used to pay fully in one year for a benefit improvement, which would support increasing the monthly benefit after 20 years of total military service from $105 to $111, and would increase the benefit after 30 years of total military service from $210 to $222. The remaining $13.5 million of the recommended appropriation during the biennium would protect against continuing market turmoil or updates to the National Guard's census. Possible that the $13.5 million could eventually go to support a benefit improvement, but only after those other conditions stabilize. That concludes my presentation of the alternatives for the State Board.
Done.
Sure. After going through the options, money that's out there, what can be done at the high end, what can be done at the low end.
Specific to the National Guard.
Specific to the National Guard. I think what Patrick has outlined is what I'll call Option Three, the third bullet on Page Nine, which is the continuing to fund due to the National Guard, similar to the main teasers fund having to play cleanup, assign people that have invested interest to either get refunds, or in this case, people that are vested in the pension plan who have not collected. There's a potential risk there that is unknown. So I think we still need to continue what we are to support that. And again, a medium funding of the $5 increase from 100, or $6 increase from 105 to 111, and from the 210 to 222, again outlined in Option Three, is sufficient, makes sense, not wasteful. I would like to make a motion to.
All right.
Pursue Option Three.
To clarify this for me, I thought part of the National Guard was to, if we did this, that we'd also ask for an increased appropriation. Is that accurate or inaccurate?
Exactly.
I thought that if we were going to do the six, for the National Guard, the $6 increase, that we were going to do it and ask for an additional appropriation. If that, am I thinking inaccurately or accurately?
Additional appropriation being the $11,031,000?
Yeah.
Yes. So this is requesting for the $6 increase, plus continuing to fund at the $11,031,715 per year for the next two years, until we can ensure the data has been stabilized.
All right. All right. So we're going to entertain a motion to, and let's, I want you to just summarize very quickly, Patrick, what the staff's recommendation is, I guess it pertains to Page Eleven.
So yes, the staff is not making a recommendation in the sense that the board's policy allows for different alternatives that are reasonable. But as I understand, the motion, Mr. Ruben House has brought, is related to this third bullet point on Page Nine. That motion would be that the board recommended the General Assembly that it maintain the $11,031,715 per year funding of this National Guard pension fund during the biennium, that it implement an increase to the benefit level to $111 after 20 years, $222 after 30 years, and that staff make the conforming changes to Page Eleven of the presentation before it gets communicated to the General Assembly.
Okay. And for teasers?
For teasers? I have not heard a motion.
I know, but what's being presented to me is approval of 2023 alternatives to approve for teasers, legislative retirement, consolidate judicial disability, and National Guard.
Yes. So with the motion, Mr. Ruben House has made, what is on Page Eleven is a draft that has no benefit enhancement and recommends a contribution rate of 16.44% for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. Is that a decrease, that's a decrease in the employer contribution rate?
It is. It's a decrease in the employer contribution rate related to non-recurring funds. So it's an increase of $40 million.
That's what I'm confused on.
It's a $40 million recurring appropriation increase.
Okay.
And it's $147 million non-recurring decrease.
Right.
So that adds up to a decrease in the contribution.
Okay. All right.
Clarity.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
So looking at that on Page Eleven, no enhancement to any of the benefits for employees?
Or for the state.
But, okay. I'm confused. I'm looking at Page Three and Page Nine, looking at the charts. So if we suggest any cost of COLA, it's going to be a 12-year period, unless we don't, a 12-year to pay it back.
Yes. So looking at Page Three, the higher table there, as opposed to the lower table, the higher table relates to permanent COLAs. And if the board were to recommend that the General Assembly implement a permanent COLA, then the board's policy would be that should also recommend that the General Assembly increase contribution rates for a 12-year period to pay for it.
Are we allowed to recommend COLAs where there's no statutory investment gains?
Board, my understanding, not an attorney, but my understanding is that the board does have the ability to recommend the COLA. There were statutory investment gains through the end of 2021, but the board can also bear in mind the reality of what happened during 2022.
So for my clarity, putting where it goes, can you, if we go with our top table, we're basing that off of the conversation that we had, General Statually, around 12-year payoff. But if we're going with one, we're asking to do it, but only because we will need the increased funding to make it to the 12th year, correct?
Yes, I hope this will answer a question. The top page would be a permanent increase, so for instance, for someone receiving $1,000 a month, if you do a 2% permanent COLA, their benefit would become $1,020 a month for life. That type of change under the funding policy requires an adjustment to the contribution for 12 years. If you do a one-time, a one-time supplement of 2% for that same person, would be, we would look at their annual pension, which is $12,000, 1,000 times 12. We take 2% of that, which is $240, and that's the amount they would receive, one time only, and it would be paid for only over one year.
Right. As appropriate by the General Assembly.
As appropriate by the General Assembly.
All right. Any other questions about the ball?
Is it, can we make a motion for the teasers? Or is that motion's going to cover us, too?
That's why we're trying, that's why I'm slowing it down.
I guess the question, and I may have stated, is I was only addressing at that point an option on the North Carolina National Guard Pension Fund. That's one piece of the chart that we're looking at. The chart on Page Eleven is that no benefit increases to any of the plans. So right now, if we were, so do we do it as a motion, as the entirety, or do we do a motion for each plan within the entire, i.e. teasers, judicial, legislative, disability, and National Guard?
I think it's more efficient to do it in the entirety, I think, but practically, given how people feel about these different plans, that we need to break it up.
Okay. So that was, I only hit the heart. We need to discuss the entire chart and all of the options provided by Mr. Kenlaw. And I would change that motion to say that we need to discuss them all. So I just didn't know if you wanted to, do we need to go one by one, or do we need to do it?
We can do what the board wants to do. I just think it'd be more polite to go one by one, given people's individual interest in these things.
Absolutely. I made a motion for the National Guard side, if we'd like to go in order, what the chart is. I'm lacking.
Anybody have a objection? Just, I hear a motion. And John, would you just very briefly tell us about the work you've been working with to come up with this?
Working within the National Guard and within the National Guard Association, I realized, and similar to the teasers, I think a little longer than the main teasers, the National Guard had not had an increase in benefits over the last five to six years. Under the guidance of our treasurer and our legal team, we've put together rules, or made changes to rules and statutes, because the National Guard Pension Fund was the least funded out of all the pension funds, hence why there was never an increase to benefits.
When you say the word least, you mean like 68% funded?
Yes, the lowest, sorry. The lowest funded.
Not 68% funded.
Yes, sir. And since you, since your team has put in effort, the change to the rules.
At the General Assembly.
Yes, sir. To put the National Guard Pension Fund on parity with teasers, and the additional funds that they pursued from about nine funds that they pursued from about $9 million to $11 million, $2 million a year to play catch-up, as well as the work that Mr. Kenlaw's team has done sitting down with reporting teams and looking at raw data with Buck and other consultants. We've cleaned up data to remove people that weren't eligible from the, sorry, weren't eligible for the pension, but they still showed up on the list, the accuracy to compute our funded level. So all of that cleanup over the last five years has resulted in, plus market gains, where we were about 118 roughly percent funded as of 2021 versus 2022.
Is it fair to say we overshot it a little bit, obviously, because we got some, got some tailwinds from cleaning up the data that we did not expect?
We overshot? You could be unknown. There's no way to know until we put names from the Treasurer's Office and from the National Guard, both Army and there, which are the morality in Charlotte, together to discuss data and the names and statutes that determine who qualifies and who doesn't qualify. Plus, the Army changed over some personnel systems, which made a huge difference.
So we have a motion from John, specific to the National Guard. Does he hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion second being made, any further discussion? I'm hearing the clerk report.
Treasurer Falwell?
Aye.
Dirk German?
Aye.
Jeffrey Winsted?
Aye.
Joshua Smith? Lance Brewer?
Aye.
Linda Gunter?
Aye.
Margaret Reader?
Aye.
Oliver Holly?
Aye.
Pat Hurley?
Aye.
Bernie Gammon?
Mr. Carriage, thank you all, your working group, for all that work. I think we'll just now go to the disability plan. Does anybody have any, entertain a motion to staff recommendation is increase the employer contribution rate by 0.01%, which increases the cost by $1.3 million to the general fund and 0.4 billion dollars to the highway fund regarding disability plan. Do I hear a motion to accept that? Hurley, second.
Second.
Thank you, John. Motion second being made, any further discussion regarding disability? Hearing done the clerk call the rule.
Treasurer Falwell?
Aye.
Blake Thomas?
Aye.
Dirk German?
Aye.
Jeffrey Winsted?
Aye.
Joshua Smith? Lance Brewer?
Aye.
Linda Gunter?
Aye.
Margaret Reader?
Aye.
Oliver Holly?
Aye.
Bernie Gammon?
Thank you all very much. I'm going to recuse yourselves since you haven't been in the mailbox yet, Pat, but legislative system, increase employer contribution rate by 6.3% reduces the general fund cost by $228,000. Do I hear a motion to accept staff recommendation regarding legislative?
Yes, I'm sorry. The recommendations of the board for the judicial and legislative systems should follow according to statute, whatever is done for teasers. I just wanted to mention that.
So straighten me out here.
It may be advisable to have a discussion about teasers, remaining items on the table will be filled in automatically by that.
Okay, right. All right, fair enough. Now, let's have a conversation about teasers.
I think it's been a long time coming. Ever since I've been on this board, we've been trying to do something. And I think, you know, now it's given us opportunity. The bonuses that we had last time were okay. I mean, everybody appreciated that check, but it was one time. And every year, we have to keep coming back over and over again. And members of the General Assembly, when we're getting that supplement, they're calling it a COLA bonus. Keep telling me there's no such word, but it keeps coming back COLA bonus, but it's not. It's not a COLA. A COLA is something that's built in. So can I make a motion with this too?
You're making your motion in light of what the staff has said about what the finances of the plan look like after getting through 2022? Or is that better?
Because he was, he was talking about the 2%. I guess, my recommendation would be a 2% COLA and a 2% supplement. That was exactly what Representative Hurley had had on her bill last year, and everybody supported that. So it's a little bit of both.
Did it pass?
We end up with, there's one particular person in the General Assembly that won't let it pass if there's anything with a COLA. And so we, that's when we end up getting the bonuses, supplements. But if we have the power of the board to find it in this department, you know, and we get our members, we organize them to really push for this, maybe a change can happen with the top leadership.
All right. You make your motion.
Okay. So my motion is for the Board of Trustees to recommend to the General Assembly a 2% COLA, a 2% supplement for all retired teachers and state employees in the teaser system for the fiscal year ending in 2024. And I'm not sure if we're supposed to put it as part about the employer contributions because that thing that you had to tell, that was part of it. Right here, that first, we have to include that too, right?
According to the board's policy, if you look at page three of this document, the increased employer contributions that would be related to the 2% permanent COLA would be 0.82%. 2% supplement would be 0.60%. So the combination of those for the upcoming fiscal year would be 1.42% added to the 16.44, sort of baseline assumption would be to call for an employer contribution rate of 17.86. I got some nods. Some of it would be non-recurring.
Is this motion that Mrs. Gunnar is making something that we have, that the General Assembly is anticipating, let me, let's be additional?
I can't speak to what the General Assembly expects, but what is, what is in our published reports?
Right.
16.44%.
So your motion would require additional employer contribution, additional employer contribution rate?
Yes, sir.
What is the surplus, right? Sorry?
What is the surplus?
I don't know what the surplus is. Not the state?
Yes.
Not my thing.
Maybe.
My, sorry, I was just major, but what, 1.42?
For the time. Part two, of which 0.82 would be for 12 years. The rest would just be for one year.
And you're making this motion in light of the fact that if, when you actually look at the numbers that we already have for 2022, that this motion will make the plan less funded?
Yes. But not by.
But less funded.
Less funded, so good, yes.
And staff can help me with this. Isn't it accurate that for years, the Treasurer and the board would make recommendations to the General Assembly even though it made the plan less funded?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of it.
Is it a fact that for years, the General, this board would make recommendations to the General Assembly, or things similar to what Linda Gunner just introduced, even though it made the plan less funded?
Yes. My understanding is the board made recommendations of COLAs at times in the past that added unfunded liabilities.
Which is not what the board's supposed to be doing. I'm not going to put you on the spot on that. So, and now that we know what the 2022 numbers are, this motion would make the plan less funded?
Yes, sir. Bucks projection that they just reviewed shows an estimate that without any additional benefit improvements, the unfunded liability of teasers will grow from 9.2 billion, which it was last year, to about 13, more than 13 billion by years. This 2% permanent COLA on top of that, as shown on page three, would add about 1.1 billion of unfunded liability.
Per year?
No, that's, that's just an unfunded liability present value.
So I just got confused because I thought, I know it's been a long meeting, but I just heard you say nine and 13. What, did I hear, did I hear that?
No, sir.
Okay. What did I tell?
The unfunded liability of teasers officially measured at the end of 2021 was 9.2 billion dollars.
Okay.
The actuaries are now projecting that it will increase to more than 13 billion dollars by the end of 2026 without any benefit improvement.
And then this would increase that for the 1.2?
1.21. Yes. By the time you get to 2026, part of it would have been paid for, but it would increase the unfunded liability by 1.1 billion dollars today.
And so this motion is, that's not been seconded, but I suspect it will be, this motion would, based on the facts that this board has in front of them, would increase the unfunded liability by 1.1 million dollars. Is that for the COLA or the supplement or both?
The 1.1 billion dollars is for the permanent COLA, and that would increase the unfunded liability by 1.1 billion dollars. And then it would set that on a plan that you pay for over 12 years. So that 1.1, the, it would also temporarily increase the unfunded liability of the system if you go down just a little bit to the next table on the same page. It temporarily increased the unfunded liability to 2% one-time supplement would add another 102 million.
All right, sure. Nice. Mr. Kenlaw, we've been talking about the unfunded liability, and I think in the materials that were on that page, you, whoever put together the materials, asked, is the investment gain from calendar year 2021 permanent? My question to you, is the investment loss from 2022 permanent?
So that phrase was a recommendation from Buck that the board should consider whether investment gains are permanent. The answer to both questions will be the same on either side. If the board feels that, and then I believe, my personal opinion, is that the board has an assumption that investment returns over the long term will be 6.5% per year. And so when you have a bad year, that's, that will be made up for by good years. When you have a good year, you have to plan that that will be countered by bad years.
And in fact, the 20-year investment performance of the Treasurer's investments is 6.6%, correct?
I don't know.
That's in, that's in an investment management division report. It's one of the sorts of things that I'd like to see the board get in future meetings. So in practice, we've seen that after a bad year, there are good years, right?
Like, for example, the last really bad year, we can remember was probably 2008, calendar 2008, was followed by some good years. Good years can be followed by benefits.
And what we're looking at today is, you mentioned the 1.1 billion dollar immediate loss that will be recognized this year, just assuming, just based on this year's performance. And we're looking at a 2.0 billion dollar gain from calendar year 2021 that we'd be also looking at here today. So we've got a 2.0 billion dollar gain and a 1.1 billion dollar loss. Am I wrong to think of it that way? This is the question I was trying to get earlier.
I believe the numbers were 2.1, 1.6, and they scheduled a loss of 7.9 billion that's already paid down to the next four years.
And that loss assumes that stocks will be exactly at 6.5% over those next few years. If it's a little bit higher, then that number's going to go down, right?
It assumes that investment returns, not only stocks, but overall investment returns would achieve 6.5% per year, every single year, starting in 2023.
Last question. The Treasurer mentioned, I think he said something along the lines, I'm probably misquoting, the board isn't supposed to increase the unfunded liability. That is a legal restriction, is it?
I don't know.
And so from what, when we're talking about that, I think he could, I doubt speak for himself, but the unfunded liability has gone up before because of decisions that this board has made, hasn't it? And it's gone down.
The board doesn't control the unfunded liability, but does control recommendations to the legislature.
And today, this plan is invested, this plan's funded ratio, according to Buck's materials, is 90%. As of 2021, it looks like from slide four here, potentially going down to 87%, but we heard from Buck that that was still above median.
I would like to address that. But yes, I heard them say that. And I believe the funded percentage of North Carolina is currently above the median of other states. That doesn't mean that all the money is in the retirement system that should be to pay benefits, already promised.
Would you like to, this, this thing that you're questioning, whether it's a law or a policy or rule, so that you were here when it happened, would you explain what you did? Got your fingerprint on.
Yeah, and many others before us. There's only so much that can be done when investment returns aren't where you want them to be, which they aren't, they weren't always during that time period. In the end, it was a, a good investment return over many years, but we had a, Treasurer Cowell had before I got there, a large investment loss because of great recession that then resulted in a significant increase in the unfunded liability. So I think there was always, the way I describe it, is a balancing act to try to, and people can reasonably disagree with this balance. I think that's what this whole vote is about, a balancing act to try to provide cost of living adjustments where possible while not taking that unfunded liability too low. And that is a matter, in my view, just speaking personally, of judgment about where to go. And you're looking at other states, you're looking at the, the bottom line. Everybody wants a funded ratio over 100. And that was the balancing act that was done then, right, wrong?
So we're having to live by that. And, you know, going back to your notion that, you know, market gives some and loses some. The fact is, from these experiences that I've described from 2001 to 2008, we've never made that back. This plan's never been back to the level that Harlem Bull's headed at in 2001. So this notion of, you know, it happens, it comes and it goes, it never came. It went. I think people in this room understand that if you lose 18 or 20% on your money, or 25% on your money, you got to make 33% on your money just to get it back. That's if you don't take money out of the plan. So, you know, as someone who has a loyalty and duty of care to this plan, not just the retirees, but the people who want to be retirees one day, that's where my loyalty is, here. And we're dealing with a lot of mistakes from previous administrations, but we're dealing with them as, as they're in front of us. We want to spend our time, you know, looking back at, you know, what decisions were made back then, then I guess we'll have to do that. But the fact is that if the General Assembly wanted to appropriate a COLA or a supplement, they could appropriate the money to do that, no matter how much surplus they have. And number two, I think, even though this board is meeting, and this Elder's Board and the Teachers' Board,
I think it puts us in a precarious situation with the local governments. Local governments who I believe you negotiated a contract with for an ECRIS policy. I believe that happened before I got here. And that ECRIS policy specifically, I think, talked about not paying colas out of the elders system. We're not talking about elders right now, but you cannot have this conversation without talking about the whole family. If there are no investment gains or if it makes the plan less funded. I don't know if your fingerprints on that, but it sure wasn't mine. And I believe that when any previous treasurer agreed to something with somebody as important as the County Commissioner's Association, the League of Municipalities, I have responsibility to do everything humanly possible to honor that. Contract that they thought they were working under the whole time they were... Did we promise them a cola?
I'm going to answer it. So from a legal standpoint, there is no contractual promise for a cola, but people are hurting, people from the groups out there because our rates, our pension benefits are not matching what inflation is doing. That matters.
But this board and I, they're not responsible for inflation.
So it's, it's a reality, sir.
Yeah, so you understand better than most on this board, and this is math, that there are less people paying into this plan than are not. For the first time in our state's history. There are less people paying into these plans than are not, right? Sure, okay. So if the plan can only get its money from employer contributions, employee contributions, which I said I would never bring to this board to increase employee contributions. And I've stood by that, and I will stand by that. Actually keeping the pension plan around at all, let's start there. But if we're set on not, if we're set on, which I am, of keeping this pension plan, sustaining this pension plan, this is where the question lies. We know people are hurting, but the question really lies in, do you believe in keeping this defined benefit plan around for the next generation of public service workers? So you can answer that question yourself. Secondly, do you, do you understand that, that if you're not going to increase the 6% contribution rate by our employees, then you have to further understand that the money can only come from investment gains or appropriations from the property taxes of local governments or the General Assembly. Furthermore, you have to consider that, A, we have facts in front of this board about what our performance was in 2022. During the most volatile period in the modern era. You talked about the stock portfolio. The bond portfolio was down more than the stock portfolio was last year. It's the only year of my lifetime where stocks and bonds, normally they do this. They didn't do that, they do it. Okay? And then you look at the fact, since there's nothing in the laws that says we have a contractual, you're being, we have to decide this as a board from the, from the neck up. Understand the fact that if we're not going to, if we're going to keep the plan, we're not going to increase employee contribution rates. We have this agreement with the elders system, with that previous treasurer negotiated. And that interest rates for most of that period of time have never been this low. People have never retired this early, and people have never lived this long. So you can, we can all speak from our heart on this topic. But that's the math. And obviously, I've given the floor to Mrs. Gunter to offer a motion. I'm not in favor of this motion. Am I in favor of people being able to live? Yes, but I'm also in favor of advocating for the people who aren't in this room, the active employees, because there are less people paying in the plan than are not. And the only way this plan gets the money to pay benefits is from employee contributions, employer contributions, and investment gains. Yes, ma'am?
A couple of questions. With the 9.2 billion unfunded, with the estimate that at the end of 2026, it could be 13. If we have gains, then it could not be 13 billion, right? Okay, with the 2%, well, with any of the percentages of cola, the increase to employer contribution, is that a one-time thing or every year for 12 years?
So Ms. Gunter's motion had a 2% permanent cola and a 2% one-time supplement, as I understood it. The part of it that is a 2% permanent cola would be, require the adjustment of the contribution rate for 12 years. Part of it that is a one-time supplement would require a further adjustment, but only for one year.
But for the cola, say the .82, is it going to increase every year, .82, or just for the next year?
Thank you for asking me to clarify that. Basically, if you recall, if you have Buck's presentation from the last agenda item in front of you, on page three of that presentation, I had a, it's on the screen in the room here. That's the blue line. Under this proposal, the, the line at the top that says 16.44, the purpleish one, going all the way up to 17.49, that would be expected to increase by 0.82 in each year.
Okay.
So for instance, the 17.49 at the end would turn into 18.31.
Okay.
And in addition, following that year, we would be on the bluish line if all other assumptions are met. So 17.41 would become 18.3, the 19.14 would become 19.96, et cetera.
Okay. Okay, a couple of other questions. If the board makes a recommendation to the General Assembly, they don't have to accept it? Or, I mean, so we make the recommendation and it's up to them whether they accept it or not, right? Okay. So last question. If we're not in favor of Ms. Gunter's recommendation, can we make another recommendation?
Sure. You have a substitute motion.
Okay.
If I was trying to make an amendment to my own, but let her go ahead.
And before you do so, because I know there was a lot of nuance about that. If it is cumulative, is it stacking? And at the end of the day, this graph, which is in your book, talks about how these employer contribution rates are going to go up. And before you make your motion, I just want to say something I think the board is used to acknowledge of. This 6.5% assumed rate return, there are records that show that it was recommended to previous boards for the last probably 15 years to lower the assumed rate of return because it was unrealistic. And nobody ever did it. And you know why nobody ever did it? Because no treasurer wanted to be associated with a graph like this. This isn't about what somebody wants to be associated with. It's about courage and whether you're actually committed to sustaining this plan. So when you look at these actuarial assumptions about the 6.5% return, Margaret, I think if my numbers are right, our actuaries have told us there's probably only a 50 or 55% chance of even hitting that number. If my memory is right.
That's correct.
So even though, since I've been the treasurer, we have actually lowered this assumed rate return four times, four times in conjunction with the General Assembly funders, the league, and the County Commissioner's Association. Because we just didn't do this willy-nilly. We had to do it with the blessings of the people who are actually funding this plan. Even though we did that, there's still only a 50% chance of hitting, even hitting that number, which will make the plan even less than. So substitute motion.
I understand the numbers and, and maybe, and you said, you know, our hearts are in this. And I deal with people all the time that are retirees and, and wanting a cola. I don't agree with asking for the cola and the one-time supplement. And I am even willing to make a motion that we look at a 1% cola for right now to start somewhere.
So you would like to, on the floor, is a substitute motion, which is exactly similar to Mrs. Gunter's motion, except it changes the two to the one.
And no...
Changes a two to a one.
And no supplement.
A two to a zero.
I'll second that. That's a wow.
I was saying, I have a question.
Yeah, we have a question, second discussion.
Sure, looking at the whole picture, we were asked, I'm not sure if you can answer it. I know Sam was answering before. As we look at the unfunded liability currently projected to drop to 87.1%, now it'll drop a little further by increasing our unfunded liability. At what point, is there a magic cutoff where we use the treasury in negotiating bonds? At what point does our, our state bond rating drop? Or is it affected by this unfunded liability shrinking? And is our decision to affect that at all?
It would be very easy, based on the narrative that I've mentioned over the last 15 minutes, for me to say, that's a risk. Because that would fit my narrative. But in reality, I think when you look at all the responsibilities that I have with the rating agencies and the fact that state debt is falling by 60% in eight years, we're running billions of dollars of budget surpluses. Our rainy day funds are higher than they've ever been in the past. The fundedness of our state health plan has gone from 2% to 10% over four years. Still 30 billion in the hole, but nevertheless. I think the rating agencies look at this total, look at the total picture. They would fit my narrative just to say, yes, I think that's a risk. But I don't think, I don't believe that, so I'm not going to say it.
I probably can't get that.
Yeah. But it's not nothing. I mean, it's not nothing because I don't just look at North Carolina, I look at it. Sorry. Bitches, Moody's, and Standard and Poor's, I read what they say about other states. I read where it's in their footnotes about colas and unfunded liabilities. And as I've said publicly many times before, I don't wait for the rating agencies to call us. I call them on a myriad of different topics. So that was a too-long of an answer to your question. I don't, I don't think it's a high risk, even though if I said it was a high risk, it would fit my narrative. But I don't believe it, so I'm not going to say it.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Before I vote on the motion, I did have a question. Why, what is your concern and why did you drop from 10% to 1% in those supplement?
Looking at the unfunded liability, thinking instead of asking for more to start with a smaller amount, is looking at the chart where it goes from 1 to 3.86, starting at the bottom and asking and hoping that that won't be too much of a ask of the General Assembly.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Need to recuse myself.
I was kidding.
Well, I have a question. Well, I have a question then, if you don't mind. This just is for active workers, not retirees, what we're discussing now, is that correct?
Totally on retirees.
Okay.
Totally retirees.
I just feel like I am in two retiree systems. So I would actually ethically be probably getting more than other people. So I feel like I need to recuse myself.
All right. I guess I'd have a question for, for you. Is there, we are so, this is ultimately a legislative recommendation. Is there any number that your office would be willing to support here for a cola or one-time supplement?
Well, all I've been trying to do is preserve and strengthen this plan since I've been here. So I don't know the basis of your question, but it's, it's been enough to go about, based on what I inherited. And so that's my answer to your question. I'm just, sorry, I know what you're trying to do.
No, no, what I'm trying to, we are a lot stronger going to the General Assembly if it's bipartisan treasurer's office support, because that's always the way it's been when we actually got one of these things. So I'm trying to see if there is a number where everybody can come together. And also, I guess this may be a follow-up, but if there's any number that the legislature has indicated Sam or other folks that they might accept.
I don't have a response to that. Margaret, would you amend your motion to say a 1% cola if it does not reduce the unfunded liability of the plan? And if it was fully appropriated by the General Assembly?
Say that again now.
Would you amend your motion to say that the board recommends a 1% cola if it does not make the plan less funded? And that all the money for the cola is appropriated by the General Assembly?
Now, I agree with all the money appropriated by the General Assembly, but isn't it going to increase the unfunded liability based on this chart?
Not if they fund it. Because when they paid out the supplement, there's not one penny left this building. Well, it did, but not.
Because my thought process was, thought process was that, okay, if the board can support the 1%, then, then it's going to take us going to the General Assembly to convince them to accept it. That was my fault, sure. So, and then, so then I understand that it will not affect the unfunded liability.
Just to be clear, because I think this is a, this would mean if she accepted this, that instead of asking for a cola to come from the corpus of the funds, I don't know if we could get that page, page three chart. Instead, this would be converting it, if you accept it, to be asking for the entire amount to come from the legislature's general fund.
Through the employer contribution rate increase. That's how it would come.
Yes, that's...
Sorry, David, I got a call on you. How would it come? Identify yourself.
David VanderWright from the Fiscal Research Division. If I've understood the discussion correctly, I believe the proposal would be that rather than increasing the employer contribution by .82%, that the contribution would be increased by some much larger amount. I don't know if anyone else has the number. But it would be increased by that much larger amount to amortize that cost over one year. So it would temporarily increase the unfunded liability, just like described earlier with the supplement. But by the end of the year, when those, all those additional contributions have been paid from that one-year amortization, the net result would no longer be an increase in the unfunded liability.
All right, let me add some of that, and then I'm going to call Patrick. The one-year, okay, I think you're closer than you realize. All right. The one-year amortization rate is theory, rule, all. What is it?
The idea of a one-year amortization for a supplement?
Not for any of that. When he.
Yes, so the 12, the 12 years over which unfunded liabilities are amortized in general, and the one-year or one-time supplements in our system are a matter of the board's policy, that the board revisits every five years based on advice from the actuaries.
Okay. On a supplement, a bonus. But on a COLA, answer that.
So on a COLA, permanent COLA, the board's policy would be that it is like an unfunded, any other unfunded liability that gets created, whether it's due to investment losses, or people living longer, or what have you. And that is paid for over a 12-year period. However, it is also consistent with the board's policy to do it faster, but not slower than 12 years.
So Margaret, out of respect for you, when I said what I said, I wasn't considering the nuance of, like, I was, I mean, a year, I'm not, you know, whatever the one year is, I would look at that as the whole year. Not like, when you do it, it comes less funded, therefore, we can't do it. I didn't mean that at all. I meant in conjunction with the one-year rule that the General Assembly tries to follow as it relates to a COLA. That's, I wasn't trying to nuance, like, if it's going to happen at Easter, if it's going to happen at July 4th. I was looking at it as a year period of time, and I ask if you would adjust your motion.
Could I provide a little more numbers about that, as far as I understood? So we're, as I understand, we're, what's being suggested by the chair is a one, Ms. Reader's motion of a 1% permanent COLA, that it be amended, ask her to consider amending it to, so that the cost of the 1% permanent COLA would be paid for over one year instead of 12. If it were paid for over 12 years, from the chart on the screen, it would increase the employer contribution rate by 0.41% for 12 years.
Which is about, that amount of money is on the screen.
Seventy-two million dollars from all funding sources, 47 million from the general fund. If it were paid for over one year, then what would be required over the one year is approximately the $533 million. The $533 million, just from looking at certain other numbers on this screen, I can estimate equates to an increase of 3% of pay, slightly, possibly slightly more than 3% of pay. So that the 16.44% contribution rate would become about 19 and a half or one year only.
We're not going to push, we're going to, we're going to irrigate this for as long as we need to. So, nobody can, somebody, make sure everybody understands what they're voting on and why. But I will add to this, that when we talk about the elders' plan, which we're going, we're going to vote on next, forgetting about the ECRIS, I can tell you, as the chair of the Local Government Commission, if this pattern starts applying to the elders' plan, we got local governments who are not going to be able to pay their pension contributions. Yes, Sarah?
And we have Sarah Collins, League of Municipality, and we have local governments who can afford to pay it, but will pull out of the pension system, I'm pretty sure, some major big ones. Which I think is a fear y'all should recognize at the General Assembly as well. We are worried if they see contribution rates on teasers, even though it doesn't affect us at all, plans are combined, if they see 18% contribution rates, they might choose for, to pass a bill where all employees of every system no longer have a defined benefit plan, which is a big worry of ours. We see it as a huge recruitment and retention factor. We don't want new employees to lose these plans. But we do think some of our members will pull out if the employer contribution rates get that high.
I will add to that, that I attend all the roundtable meetings, I attend all the county commissioner and the League of Municipality meetings, I consider, attend all the little breakout ad hoc committees that the League and County Commissioner's Association have put together. What she said is absolutely real. This is not nothing, is what she's talking about. Because they're dealing with an employment base of younger people who don't see the benefit of a pension plan, have been growing up in an environment of a 401 and 457. They don't appreciate the value of this plan. So why keep hitting, in some of their cases, why keep hitting their head against the wall to offer a plan that people don't really appreciate, when it would be more predictable for them to offer a plan that just makes a match and they're done with it? I will add to that, what Sarah just said, very important. As I said earlier, there are less people paying into this plan than are not. You start talking about people exiting the plan as a major employer, as a major contributor to these plans, I don't even know what that looks like. It just hit me right then when she said it for the first time in my life. And so, if less people are paying into plan than are not, and we're now on a run rate on these plans to pay out $7.4 billion here in Chris Benet's. And then people start leaving the plan because they don't, they don't have the juice to pay 19% of payroll, then you, basically you don't have a plan at all. Yes, sir?
I, 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 I sit here and I listen, and I'm glad the comment was just made, recently coming from one of the smallest school systems in the state of North Carolina, that we've discussed in here to work with the county, trying to make, do what that county was responsible for. It does concern me. It also concerns me that we have retirees that need it. But when we start looking at the bigger asks to these smaller districts, these smaller school systems, I'll be honest, it concerns me greatly. I would love to see, and don't, I would love to see a COLA and a raise across the board. But when we start taking, looking at the hit that we're going to have to the full fund in these small school systems and small districts, because that's where Etaro County has to go and ask. It scares me. It scares me. What I would love, if the amendment, it was coming across at 1%, 2%, it was fully funded on the backside from General Assembly, I would love that all day. I'm not sure if that would happen. And that's my, that's my love. I would love it. I hope to be a retiree in eight, nine years. But pushing it down is where my question was, are we looking at a 12-year period that we have to make sure that that money is there, only if that is fully funded? And that concerns me.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm so sorry, I have not ignored the people on the phone, but I'm glad you spoke up.
Yes, sir. Quickly, I wanted to make a, we, I've been patiently listening, and I think we have a short minute. We had the same discussion.
We're only hearing, we're only hearing every fifth word. I apologize.
Yeah. Well, my, I don't know if it's my phone, an echo, pretty bad echo.
Does everybody have their phones off? Hang on a minute. Let's everybody just, just out of respect for the people joining us remotely, just, everybody turn their phone off, see what that does. If you don't mind.
Okay, can you, can you hear me now?
That's beautiful.
Yeah, I don't have an echo. That's probably, thank you for doing that. My comment is basically, we had the same discussion almost a year ago when we were considering COLAs and one-time supplements. And we, we ended up going with a one-time supplement. We were all concerned about the potential challenges that would oppose the overall plan. And we're having the same discussion now, and, and the environment's much worse. It just doesn't make any sense to me why we would put our plan at risk. I'd rather get my retirement what I'm getting now than risk not getting it at all and putting the plan in danger. We, we had this discussion, we came to a rational conclusion, yeah, we'll try a one-time supplement. And that's when we had a $300 million surplus, or I think that number was. And now we're talking about billions of loss due to the, the environment, the economic environment. This is not the time to offer COLAs and even supplemental COLAs. So, and you should come in and talk to Mr. Treasurer. You mentioned that we are a community, we are a family. Our system is tied to the state system. And I believe the comment made earlier that this could risk potential challenges to the overall system is putting us behind the eight ball. I just, I know I'm not supporting the state retirement, I urge not to approve any COLA temporary or supplemental term. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
But if we ask the General Assembly to fully fund it, then it's not going to affect our plan, right?
Good luck with that.
That's why we have to get out there and talk with our legislators, and try to get them to understand where the retirees are.
Let's actually answer her question, then go to the next point.
I'm sorry, the question was whether the General Assembly would.
Fully funded, and how would that affect our plan?
Right. So if the, if you, if you recommended a 1% permanent COLA, which would increase the unfunded liability by $533 million, but then you ask the General Assembly to fund it all within a year, by the end of the year, the unfunded liability would be paid for, and you would be back in the same position theoretically, in terms of funding, as you were at the beginning of the year.
Next point, Margaret.
Okay, right there, the formula is at 1.82. What would happen if we increased the formula?
I don't have to be an actuary to answer this one. You increase the formula, all this would get worse. And actually, if you look at the formula that was promised to the retirees, that formula started at 1.4. So when somebody came to work for the state, and there were retirees and people in this area, and, Linda, you can tell us what it was. I mean, 20 years ago. Anyway.
Yeah, I can't remember. I have all those charts, though.
But going back to what was promised, it was like 1.4 or 1.5, not 1.82. So by working in the system during that period of time, they did not get paid 1.5. They got paid 1.82, which is not what was promised to them the day they went to work. On top of that, for the elders' system, it's 1.85, not 1.82. And you say, is that a big difference? It kind of is if you're 50 years old and you're retiring. It does add up. So that if you have two people the same age, spending the same money, retiring from the local system and the state system on the same day, same age, same money, retiring on the same day, from the get-go, the elders' people get, their paycheck would be bigger the first month, right off the bat, because it's a 1.85, not a 1.82. So if you increased it, to, it makes everything we talk about a lot worse. And that's why, and I don't try to be simplistic or caustic about this, it's, there's only three levers. I wish we had five levers, that we could, you know, pull this one down. But there's only three levers to this whole mathematical equation. Especially when you take things off the table, like, we're going to keep this plan around for the next generation of public service workers. We're not going to increase the employer contribution rate. I wouldn't believe the pressure I get to increase the employee, excuse me. You would not believe the pressure that I get to increase the amount of money coming out of the paychecks of the employee. And I've, I've never entertained it, and I've said I wouldn't entertain it as long as I was here. It's not easy to actually do, but we, so far, we've done it. And none of this is easy. Sorry, I said too much.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a numerical answer to Ms. Reader's question on the, you can, without getting into the very, very specifics, you can think of the cost of a increasing the 1.82, 1.83, as very similar to the cost of a 1% permanent COLA. Buck has measured that for us, and it would increase the 12-year employer contribution rate instead of 0.41, 0.46% for 12 years.
I'm actually glad we're having this conversation, personally, because we have a lot of lower fixed income employees of our state who are not retirement ready. One thing I'm going to be pushing for this year is for a state 401, 457 match. Both of these plans are managed in this building. We have participants who, in the 401, state employees and local employees, 60% of the local employees participate in the 401K, or 457, I say it at the same time. 40%, twice as many as a percentage, people contribute to the 401 in the local system, right down the hall, as they do in the state system. Both public service employees, both similarly on the same pension plan upstairs. Why is that? Why could one be twice as much as the other? It's because there is no 401, 457 match at the state level. So one of my legislative proposals this year is going to be for the General Assembly to start matching the 401, 457 plan. Now, I'm not going to do it in a way that people are very happy with. People who make what I make are not going to be happy with the way I'm going to do it. Because what they would like to see is for this to be a percentage of what you make. No offense, I really don't care about people who make what I make. I care about the people who are struggling every, making $35,000, $40,000 a year, who are not retirement ready. So when I do a 401, 457 match, I want it to be a dollar amount. So whether you make $38,000 a year, or you make what I make, you still get the same dollar amount. It benefits lower than fixed income individuals. And just $50 a month for that proposal is $124 million bucks a year. I mean, it's kind of enormous. I mean, just something like $50 a month for our state employees to be matched in the 401K is $120 something bucks a year. 600 bucks a year is $120, because of how many people are on this plan, and the fact that there are less people paying into plan than are not, for the first time. So, so we have a motion on the table.
And then I have been recognized before, but got interrupted by the people online. I appreciate your comments from the local government. Somehow, even though I've been on the board, I just didn't realize that. And then also, I think, as a board, I might go to the General Assembly and ask for something. And even, like with Representative Perle's bill, she was asking for two and two, but they, they went to the one-time supplement, and probably because of this, and because of someone blocking it in the other house. So I think another compromise might be just to do, to ask for a one-time supplement, like say, 2% in '23 and 2% in '24, and split it, kind of like they did the two and the three. And so it's just a one-time, and then, you know, it cuts down on how much money it would actually cost.
In which system are you referring to?
Teasers.
Because I was, I was getting from what you were saying, that, you know, the elders should go and.
No, I was just, I was just realizing how.
Can do that in the General Assembly, to get the state, the General Assembly to pay for an elder?
No, I'm sorry. But I was just.
Then you're a magician.
I know. I appreciated what she said, and how what we did affected them. And so I was trying to be cognizant of that, and as a board, you know, we probably, maybe I digged up my numbers a little too high for us. But, I mean, not that it's not needed. But I think you're right. The only other option is to do nothing. And so it seems like if we do, if we came out with a supplement and did two and two, it seems like that's not, you know, it's spread it out over two years.
And let them fund it.
And let them fund it. They've got the money. They've got, it's like $6.5 billion, I thought, over there they haven't spent.
I will say, and I'm not speaking for the League, but just from conversations I've been in, you know, people that I've talked to who actually have a responsibility for these counties, by the way, all are more bears than citizens.
We're going down the road now, so.
Jumping in the car.
Might still have more bears than citizens. But anyway, he had more bears than citizens. I spoke to his commencement class, 36 people, one high school. My mom graduated 1929 in Sparta High School. There was 18 in her class. So there's only twice as many people in his class 100 years later as there was in Sparta High. as there was in Sparta High School. So this is real. And the reason I say that is in these conversations I've had is, you know, a lot of the local governments, because they're choking on this, a lot of the local governments want to see real reform into the system about a multiplier that's lower, a minimum retirement age.
For new hires.
Yes, for new hires, and maybe an increased match with a 401 or 457. I mean, there's a lot of different things that can go into this. So, and I'll just say, anecdotally, I've talked too much anecdotally today. I won't say who it was, but, you know, one of the... The person who has the responsibility for one of the largest employee groups of this whole state had a meeting with me the other day and was talking about its succeeding. They want to take their... They don't want to be a part of this anymore. And I said, "That's fine." They were shocked. And they said, "You're okay with that?" And I said, "Yeah, as long as you take your tail with you." Wow. They said, "Well, our consultants didn't mention a tail." I said, "You've got a $4 billion tail. So you can leave the neighborhood if you like, but you're going to take your $4 billion liability with you. You're not going to leave the neighborhood and leave your tail with us to pay for it." And that's not an... Is that an actual real word? Tail, yeah.
I don't know what you're talking about.
It's the unfunded liability that's been filmed up in the state health plan for this pension plan. Then when somebody tries to leave the neighborhood, they just want to, they want a clean break. They don't want to take that with them. Consultants never tell them that. So this reforming of the system for the long term for new hires, this is all happening. And people putting pressure on me to increase the employee contribution rate. I could pay an increased employee contribution. But there's a lot of our customers that couldn't. From six to seven, would blow them up. I'm related to some of these people. And that's why I feel so strongly about it. So, yeah.
Just one quick comment. In the past, and I found this document on the Treasurer's Office website from 2017, to my knowledge, it's an accurate list of COLA history for the plans, but I don't know whether it is or not. If this is right, there were teasers COLAs, but not elders' COLAs in 2016, 2013, and 2011, and different numbers between the two systems before that. So I guess my... Just to be clear, we do not have to do the same thing for teasers and elders, right?
Yes, okay, but give the percentage.
The percentages, yeah, they're tiny. Not enough, 1% versus 0%.
Some at 0.1, like less than 1%.
Yeah, they're tiny. 0.1... There was one year when there was, I don't know how this happened, a 0.1% COLA in elders, but none for teasers, if this chart's right.
And I can clarify my statement. Yeah, you can do whatever you want with teasers. It won't affect elders at all in theory. My worry is it might affect the General Assembly's support of a defined benefit plan overall. And because our systems in application and in administration are tied so closely together that if the General Assembly doesn't want to fund teasers anymore for new hires, that means they'll do away with elders for new hires, too. If the contribution rates get so high that they think, "This is not something we need to fund anymore for new hires," that that will affect elders as well. You're completely accurate that what you do today for COLA or supplement for teasers will have no immediate bearing on what the elders' board chooses to do for elders. It's just my worry is support of the system overall.
And on top of that, like I have a letter here from NCRGDA. It says, "The North Carolina Retired Governments Employers Associations..." So it's not teasers, it's teasers and elders. So when these people are out advocating for supplements or COLAs and they see one member of the family getting something and the other member of the family not getting something, it's just complicated. Last two things I'll say about your statistics. Number one is the elders' plan is better funded than teasers' plan this morning, right?
That is very close to the same.
Yeah, but for...
For maybe it's time. It's very close to the same.
And the reason is, to go back in history, Alfred, after 9/11, the General Assembly did not fully fund the teasers' plan. The local government said, "We're going to keep our foot on the gas." So that, you know, the local governments showed the courage after 9/11 to keep funding the plan, even though they were suffering at the local government level financially, just like the state was. And that's why the elders' plan is a little better funded. On top of that, the elders' plan does have a 1.85 multiplier versus the teasers' 1.82. So where are we on your motion?
Bye for the folks.
If I am to find it wants to say anything, I just...
My alter.
What did you say?
You mean the last compromise that I had?
The two and two, as long as it's fully funded by the General Assembly.
Right, yes, that supplement, don't call it a COLA bonus.
Call the supplement two and two, fully funded by the General Assembly, doesn't make the plan less funded. Because it's being paid out, right?
You said fully funded by the General Assembly. In this chair, we're talking about the increase, basically the bottom number, sorry, general, second number. We're not talking about increasing employer contribution. So employer stays stable.
Yes. And this motion on the floor would not result in the plan being less funded?
Sure, but the employer contribution...
I mean, say it differently. No, sir. You mean I'm correct?
Yes, yes.
I need to be correct. I just want to make sure.
You are correct. The motion on the floor, if it were paid for over one year, the plan would recover the unfunded liability that gets created within one year.
This is a supplement.
That's correct. So there's an unfunded liability that goes into place when the supplement is created, the fund would recover it within one year. And then the second year, the same thing would happen. Another supplement creates an unfunded liability.
I don't know why I forgot that. Because actually, we paid all this money in October. So I was looking at cash balance, said, "Where'd that $268 billion go?" It's because the General Assembly... David, don't do that again. We're going to pay out something in October. You need to give us the money in October, not October, February, July. That's actually happening while we're sitting. We paid all the money at once, but the money's coming into us over four quarters.
But the whole thing is everybody wants it before the election to kind of get credit. I think that's part of it. It always comes in October.
If I was going to do things for elections, I would...
But that wasn't you. It's not you, but it's like whoever makes these decisions, I think that they kind of push for that date. I'm not saying you do.
John?
Mr. Irvinghausen's question. The employer... The general fund appropriation is appropriated in the form of increased employer contribution. So it's collected through employers paying an increased percentage of their employee salary. So looking at the 2% column of the lower table, what we would expect from this motion is that the employer contribution for the upcoming fiscal year would increase from 16.44% to 17.04%. The following year, most likely, second year by any, it would increase from 16.79 to 17.39. And that would result in appropriation, the appropriation increase related to that change would be $69 million from the general fund in each of the two years, and $160 million from all funding sources in each of the two years.
That's not much.
I hope that was clear.
Would it go back after the second year? Would it decrease?
So in the third year, the projection is that the contribution rate would go to 17.14, which would be a little bit, a little bit less than the second year under this motion. Second year will be 17.39. It would be allowed to decrease to 17.14.
So the way for the General Assembly to fully fund it is to increase employer contribution, which is... So not pay out the money that they already have.
Well, I suppose it's conceivable that they can make a direct appropriation, but typically through employer contribution.
So let's connect that dot, except for highway money. If they increase the employer contribution rate, they also are the ones paying the employer contribution. Connect that. Yes. Is that... David?
David Van der Wijde for the Fiscal Research Division again. For many employers, a large portion of their employees would be funded from the general fund. So that is correct for many of the employees, but some of the employees...
So this general... And this employer contribution rate, when you have a community college president, for example, or maybe even a superintendent making a lot of money, that comes back, even though it's teasers.
It's back to local.
Well, yeah, because it comes back through the property taxes of local government.
We'll go back to the county for funding.
Yep.
And that's why I made a comment of a small district for the school system, the bulk of that funding is sitting down with the county commissioners and asking for an increase, knowing that... A penny on the dollar in federal, you know, per acre was not even $10,000.
And the reason he said that is because half the acreage is not taxed. That county has. Because of who owns it. Right.
I'm sorry.
Half the acreage in rural counties is not taxed. Because of who owns it.
Yes, yes.
Tom's giving me the...
Well, the last motion that we had, I believe, it's from Parker Reader on a 1% permanent COLA. And there was a second, but then there was a discussion on amending that. I think that's where we kind of left off.
That I could amend or...
It's her vote, it's...
She took my motion. She took my motion and changed it. And now I'm often trying to take it back and...
Don't be bashful about it. Just go get it.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to move for the board to support the 2% supplement for '23 and a 2% supplement for '24. Teasers.
Paid for by the...
Paid for by the General Assembly. Because not to have two pockets over there.
Which would be legislative and judicial as well, right?
So it would all go together if that's my favorite.
All right. So I understand, so if we vote on this, what is the staff recommendation? What is the staff recommendation? So...
We did not, staff did not make a recommendation, a specific recommendation, because there are many alternatives available under the board's policy.
Okay. I'm just going to add to your question that there are some board chairs who recommend the staff to make a certain recommendation. I believe the board has to do its work. I think that's what's happened over the last couple hours. The board is doing its work, and I'm a big believer in that.
Treasurer?
Yes, sir.
This is Tim O'Connell from the NCRGDA. I just want to applaud the work that everyone in the room has been doing. And we do appreciate the support. I will also just share the statistics that state employees in the past, retirees in the past 10 years have a total of 2% increase. And then our local government has everybody less than 1% increase. And I understand the Treasurer's Office is not responsible for inflation, but I hope everyone will consider it as a factor as you know many North Carolinians, incomes are suffering. Thank you.
Tim, you also acknowledged that this 1.85% payout out of the elder system is a far greater payout than what certain employees were promised when they came to work.
I appreciate that 1.85, and I do believe from that advantage, and I understand North Carolina, rural North Carolina counties and municipalities, so I am appreciative of that number.
So what I'm saying is, is that 1.85 is greatly higher than the percentage that people were told when they came to work to get vested in the system decades ago.
Yeah. And I definitely appreciate the work that local government has been doing to bolster that the past 10 years or so. Appreciative of the work there.
John? Again, I'm getting lost in numbers here, but on the clarification, if recommending...
You're getting lost in numbers. We need to adjourn.
It's numbers in my sense. On the 2%, when we say 100% funded by the General Assembly, that means we're asking the General Assembly for $105.8 million, according to the chart, upfront. We're not asking them to increase the employer contribution and provide 68.7. We're asking bottom column, 2%, there's a price tag, $105 million paid out. So we're not adding to the employer contribution, realizing a bulk of that is from the state, but there's other employers that are money that doesn't come from the state. So without infringing on those, it's 100% General Assembly funded? Is that when you say General Assembly funded?
It's either one of you. Patrick's actuary, but David has to operationalize.
So David Van der Wijde, Fiscal Research Division again. So I think you can, in theory, do it either way, but it has always been done by increasing the employer contribution in the past. In theory, I think it could be done the other way with a direct appropriation of $105.8 million.
Yeah.
So does that go into our motion?
Yes.
Would it... Discussion item, not amendment yet. Would it be helpful for us to establish in the motion a preference for that to be directly funded rather than coming in as part of the employer contribution rate, as has been the case in the past?
I think I heard that as an intention, but I didn't hear it in the motion. So I think we're all...
I think Treasurer Follow asked me to include that, right? Because when I finished what I said, then he chipped in.
This is a slightly additional nuance which should be added. So give the follow.
So I'll make a motion to amend and ask for you folks who know the details here to fix me. A motion to amend by adding a preference by the Board of Trustees for the pension supplement to be funded by a direct appropriation rather than by an increase in the employer contribution rate.
As a supplement, 2% one year, 2%...
This would be going back to her motion of a 2% supplement and a 2% supplement.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second. Let's do that in a second. Do you mind?
I don't care.
George?
We have a motion, a second on the table, and a front discussion. Hearing the clerk call roll.
Here's your follow-up.
All right.
Blake Thomas.
Hi.
Jeffrey Winstead. John E. McHousen.
Hi.
Les Brewer.
Hi.
Parker Reader. Oliver Holling.
Frank Givens. I don't have to read from this particular motion. It's different.
This teasers and legislators.
But you're asking the legislation to do it, and I don't know of that. So I feel like I can, as a recommendation.
And we'll come back and tackle the tougher issue.
I'm sorry, Tom did not order lunch for y'all.
What branch of service we doing?
What branch of service we doing?
MRIs.
MRIs.
Yeah. Let's go.
MRIs, you're next.
Continue.
What time is your flight?
3:30 or something.
I want to get you out of here. It's not in this day and time.
That's a lie.
That'll be, oh, I'll make it.
This'll be the one that hasn't been done, like, she's had a lot of...
I always get so many delays, so...
No question.
No.
I meant that in a good way. It's a good time when we go to the phone.
Oh, gotcha.
Bye there.
United.
Let's roll. All right, go ahead.
All right. Well, Mike Grillock, again, presenting the same updates on projections. The local plan, looking at slide four, similar picture that we've been calling over for TV. This is, again, sensitivity to the 2022 asset returns for the... This is focused on the non-law enforcement contribution rates. Again, the yellow line is assuming we had received 6.5% asset return during 2022, and the blue line is updated, like, that estimated minus 10.4% for 2022 and what the actual determined contribution rate is for. So we're absorbing the $5.6 trillion loss for 2022, and then spreading over that five-year period to weigh into the actual value assets. So you can see the blue line is on upward trend, up 10.43%, and taking out the full year ending 2029, and 17.99% is our latest. And that's assuming, again, returns from here on out, 23 forward, are at 6.5% per year, and that there's no benefit from, kind of, including benefits from the forward line for the record. The purple line is the board's policy, and it's sufficient policy, and it has that four year time horizon before, before these, you know, where do we end up with that 17.99%? That's kind of a moving target again. But 12.85% that is for this year's important contribution rate as a baseline is, you can actually see it, it's the first year, fiscal year 2025 is the first year where the board's policy can actually have it decrease if the contribution rate is lower. So it dips down a little bit, but then the policy begins moving up and kind of straddles the blue line. So it's keeping in, you know, on average, it's keeping in line with what we need on actual determined contributions. So the purple and blue line are similar. We get out to calendar year 2026, we're sitting here with the board, you know, to see where this peak turns out at 17.99, see if the policy is sufficient or if it needs to be tweaked or changed or extended. Without the policy, the rates will go up to, you know, based on our projections and some that I mentioned, it will be at 17.99%. And looking to the next slide, the law enforcement officer rates are actual determined, same kind of peak except a little bit higher. And the purple line is determined based on the policy, based on the non-law enforcement officers plus an adjustment for the law enforcement officer benefits. Similar, it could settle a little bit higher. And moving on to the last slide, this is kind of a funded ratio, protection of funded ratio based on, again, the yellow line was 6.5% for 2022, blue line reflects the minus 10.4% when the funding target is liability for the assets that we have recognized on actual value over the assets, the actual approved liability that we're targeting. You see that funded ratio, just like teaser drops over a five-year period as we bring in that loss over time, we dip down and bottom out at 85.6%. And then we also have the 12-year amortization, but it's just with the combination of smoothing over five years and amortizing over 12 years, the policy does get to 100% funded or 99.7% of the projected.
I will say, undoubtedly, I got a call last week from a person I met with four years ago, large employer entitled to be in the elder system. And they were all gung ho about getting in the elder system. This goes back to what Sarah said earlier, not people who believe it by coming in. And this person called me last week. They were spitting nails at me four years ago. I showed them a chart about where these contribution rates were headed. Are you sure you want this? They called me last week. Thank you. I'll hear that all. Calls, what we talked about was actually happening. So thank you for sharing your report. Thank you.
Thank you about an hour.
We were quick. Sit in the big chair.
So thank you and good afternoon again. This is Patrick. So this agenda item is similar.
I got stuck.
John, would you bring up your...
About to do a vote on something.
It was solved, sorry.
It was...
Okay.
It's all...
Finally. Good catch. Thank you. This agenda item is for the local board. It's similar to the discussion we had for the state board. We'll be focusing first on the executive summary on the first page of this item. And again, there are three, wait, it couldn't come up, but there are three questions on the executive summary, and the third one will be deferred to an agenda item real soon. But that leaves us with two questions to be addressed by the local board. One of them relates to the local system, and the second one relates to the firefighters and rescue squad workers. For the local system, the question is how to establish the employer contribution rates for the upcoming fiscal year and relatedly whether to adopt any benefit increase. There's two big differences in this discussion, first, we're talking about the state board. For the local board, first of all, a local board has the limited authority delegated to it by the General Assembly to actually provide for benefit improvements or supplements within certain limits. So it's not merely a matter of requesting or recommending action by the General Assembly, but the local board has the authority to do that. The second big difference is that primarily one big entity that has to fund budget for costs, we are now dealing with about 900 local government entities that need that budget to fund for the cost. So just to draw those distinctions versus the previous discussion we're having with the state board. For the local system in the upcoming fiscal year, one all righted is to follow the baseline projection that Bob just shared for you. That projection assumes there would be no further benefit improvement beyond what has already been promised. And the employer contribution rate would be 14.1% for law enforcement officers and 12.85% for non-law enforcement officers. It's projected to increase all the way up to 20.38% of pay for law enforcement, 17.99% for non-law enforcement by the fiscal year ending 2029. A big increase scheduled for next year. For the upcoming fiscal year 2024, the employer contributions would represent an increase of $60 million, six zero, over what local governments are paying in the current fiscal year. If you look at, when we have the document up, there's page three, which has the two tables about halfway down the page, similar to what we were looking at for the state board. There's a table showing the costs of a permanent COLA and a table showing the costs of a one-time supplement. I won't read all the numbers. We've talked about them at some length on the state board side, and the tables are very similar. It's just that you don't have general fund and other funding sources here. You basically have... You basically have a dollar amount that would be required of all local government, of all the local governments collectively for either a twelve year period or a one year period. So for instance, to take the two percent permanent colas as an example, two percent permanent cola would require contributions of forty nine, an additional forty nine million per year for twelve years from local government employers. And it would increase the unfunded liability by three hundred and seventy nine million dollars. A two percent one time supplement would, would require thirty five million dollars from local government employers paid for in one year. Summarize this part, the board could establish the employer contribution rates effective July first, twenty twenty three at fourteen point one percent of pay for law enforcement, twelve point eight five percent for non-law enforcement with no benefit. Or the boards could adopt one of the alternatives shown in the presentation along with the associated funding increases beginning July first, twenty twenty three. Mr. Chair, I don't know, would you like me to proceed to the firefighters and rescue squad workers pension fund for?
I think given our audience, we should probably separate that. All right, but. Bob's already presented, right?
Bob has already presented.
I mean, you're done. I mean, done, done, sort of.
I just haven't described the alternatives for the firefighters.
Okay, good. I just don't want to hold anybody here. All right, we'll just, let's talk about the elders and we'll talk about the firefighters. See if I have any questions on what has been presented and would you like to speak?
We are prepared to speak.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Jeff Morris, is it appropriate to make a motion at this time so we can get the discussion going?
Let's, let's let the league speak and then we'll entertain, I'll come right back to you if that's okay with you.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Jordan Councillor here on behalf of North Carolina League of Municipalities. I'm legislative counsel for them. The League of Municipalities is a state membership throughout the state, statewide membership throughout the state organization. We represent over five hundred and forty cities and towns throughout the entire state of North Carolina, which is essentially every city and town. Given the information that we've received today and in consideration of the negative ten point four percent estimated loss, we do believe, believe that the appropriate action at this time would be to go forward with the already previously agreed on ECRIS, which would be an incremental increase in employer contribution that has already been set out and agreed upon previously. That is not to include any further benefit, whether that be a cola or another one time raise. Just looking at generally the entire loss of sixteen point nine percent for below what it's estimated to have been from last year's returns, that's essentially about five point six billion dollars. And in this situation, when the loss is properly funded, it's going to fall exactly on the backs of local governments who already have significant challenges as it is. So we decided that the appropriate need to move forward with the already predetermined and agreed on ECRIS, which is a smaller increase without a one time supplement increase or a cola. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome. Mr. Morris?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to get discussion going that we adopt the recommendation that there will be supplemental increase or a call. And we stick to the ECRIS. On a rate increases with twenty three to four.
If I heard you correctly, your motion is to adopt no call it increase, no supplement and to stick with the ECRIS increase that the league and the treasurer's office has previously agreed to regarding the fundings.
That is correct.
That is correct. Start your socket to that. I'll suck it then. Thank you. Any further discussion? Here you go. The clerk will call the rule. Treasure Falwell?
Hi.
Brenda Howerton? Lee Atkinson?
Hi.
Homer Dearman? Kevin Gordon? Thank you. Let's Purer?
Hi.
Thank you. Melody Brady?
Hi.
Thank you, Nancy Vaughn? Nancy Vaughn? Pat Burley? And Bernie Gammon?
Ah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now firefighters.
Firefighters and rescue squad workers. The alternatives for that bond are outlined on pages five and six of the document. This fund, according to the most recent actuarial valuation reports, had a funding surplus as of the end of twenty twenty one. There was no unfunded liability. In fact, surplus was twelve million dollars on actuarial value of assets and forty two million dollars based on market value as of the end of twenty twenty one. That surplus was generated again in large part by the continued efforts of the general assembly to fund the plan at a current level of twenty million dollars per year, which has been greater in recent years than what the actuaries have said was minimally required. Under the board's current policy, the funding recommendation for the upcoming fiscal year, if there were no benefit increase, is twenty million fifty two thousand two hundred and eight dollars. The amount of the, that's versus the amount the actuaries have said is minimally, minimally required is more than three million dollars. Significantly more than that. So the board would be requesting if there was no benefit. Alternatively, the board could recommend a benefit improvement as shown in the table on page six. Pursuant to the board's policy, any benefit increase in this range shown in the table would need to come with a recommendation to increase the member contribution rate from ten dollars to fifteen dollars per month, which is an increase of five dollars per month. That increase of five dollars per month would be the same whether the board is looking at a one dollar increase in benefits or a fifteen dollar increase in benefits on this table. Also, any benefit increase would need to come with a recommendation for additional funding as laid out on. In doing so, the board could technically look towards one of the first three columns of numbers on this table, which I assume various amounts of surplus are available in the funds to pay for a benefit increase. But but it was, but the actuaries reports with final twenty two, twenty twenty two numbers will not be published until October of twenty twenty three. But we know that the market value surplus that existed at the end of twenty twenty one was eliminated by market experience during twenty twenty two. So if you were to make a recommendation based on notion that there is surplus funding and let's assume the general assembly went ahead and enacted that recommendation. All that would happen is the actuaries would measure that higher benefit level as part of an unfunded liability and it would have to be paid for by the state anyway. So all of that to say that it seems more prudent here to look at the very right most column, which is asking the general assembly to pay for full cost of any benefit improvement that the board recommends, all within one year. So one alternative that a local board member specifically requested be considered by the board would be to recommend that the general assembly enact a five dollar benefit increase from one seventy to one seventy five per month along with a five dollar member contribution rate increase from ten fifteen dollars per month. And from the right hand column, this would involve requesting a fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriation of thirty four million six hundred and seventy eight thousand nine hundred and seventy one dollars, which is about fifteen million more than otherwise the board has been requesting. To provide another example, looking at this table, if the board were to look at a ten dollar benefit increase up to one hundred and eighty dollars per month, the similar number would be forty nine million three hundred and five thousand seven hundred and thirty four dollars, which is about twenty nine million if the board otherwise would have been requesting and public. That includes the description of the alternatives in this one.
All right, you said a board member was when we spoke the other day, that's been working with its working group, recommended a five for five with the full thirty three eight dollar appropriation by the general assembly.
Yes. Request a W person to staff to specifically present that alternative to this one.
So let's be clear because we're talking about a lot of stuff. Be a five percent premium increase for active members.
Five dollars.
Five dollars. Did I say percent?
Five dollars per month.
Again, five dollar premium increase for active members. The five dollar retiree increase for retirees. And the total amount under the current structure, for those of you who aren't really been involved in the system. So a person over, they only paying for twenty years. And that was twenty four hundred bucks?
That's correct. Ten dollars a month for twenty years.
And then they're done paying.
That's correct.
When can they start drawing? Sorry, I have a stitch.
And they're fifty five years old.
All right, so what's, what's it like is to be fifty five, they can start drawing?
They receive one hundred and seventy dollars a month.
Right.
They receive back, in theory, the contributions that they made within two years faster than than they can go on receipt for something a month for the rest of their life.
All right, okay. Thoughts, comments, motions? We'll let the folks here in uniform, I think it'd be appropriate with that, or have no objection to letting them speak before we vote on this. As we did with the league.
Thank you, Mr. Treasure. Members of the board, congratulations on your performance. I'm Tim Bradley. I'm Executive Director of State Fire Department Association. We represent all forty nine thousand or so fire departments both through volunteer. I've also been a volunteer. This is my forty ninth year in Mavon as volunteer, but it's been, it's been since two thousand and eight since we have given firefighters an increase in the fire rescue work. And five dollar, a five dollar increase sounds great until you set aside the five dollar increase in benefits. And because most of the people, most of those forty nine thousand dollars aren't sitting in this room, they're going to see that as a watch. What we'd hoped for was a five dollar increase in premiums and a ten dollar increase in benefits funded by the general assembly. And we were hoping that there may be some adjustments that could be made. Believe looking at this chart that we went from, we could do that for four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. Now it's going to cost forty nine million dollars in one year, but we know that's how the market is, but we would encourage you to work some way, whether reducing the, reducing the funding. I remember years ago attending when I first came to work for the state in eighty five pension board meetings where the funding was in the seventy percent range. But if there's any way you could work that out, I think that's what the codes are in fire service.
Thank you, Tim. Any of your other folks here? Bernie. So interesting when we had our break, everybody gravitated toward the men in uniform, so that still holds true. Kevin, is Kevin Gordon close?
He was, sir.
Yeah, I want to phone. Hello?
Yeah, you got the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Hey, well, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Wish I could, wish I could have been there in person. As Tim said, it's been a long time since the firefighters and rescue squad workers have seen, seen an increase in the fund or in their benefit and anything that we could do would be greatly appreciated, I'm sure. And as much as we could get for them would be, well, be very appreciative, I'm, I'm sure, without question. So I'm sure that this will be changed or likely to be changed, but I would like to entertain a motion that we do the ten dollar benefit enhancement with the five dollar contribution, just to get the discussion started.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I like Bernie and Cameron. I like the stock in that motion.
Okay. I ask for my clarification.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon, just to be clear on your motion, to go along with that, you would recommend requesting appropriation from the general assembly of forty nine million three hundred and five thousand seven thirty four?
Well, yes, sir. Let me say, as you and I've spoken, Treasure and I've spoken many times before, so I've tried to balance two, two things. For this year, I'll be on the board and, and this fund, as I would any other fund, as well as advocating for the firefighters of the state. And many of the discussions has been held on this board since I've, I've been sitting all morning long and many discussions has been had about inflation and those benefits being degraded is, is it just as true here as it is, it is anywhere else, even though this is a supplemental retirement for some and it's not, not their full pension, that is still not the same value as it used to be. And, and many of these guys are, many of these firefighters are two hatters, so they volunteered in their community, which makes them eligible for this, and then they work somewhere else as well. So with that, yeah, and if, if we could put our, our support, fire services support of fifty five thousand members across the state behind us with the general assembly, then, then we'll try that. And if it doesn't work, then I guess we'll land wherever the general assembly decides that it needs to be.
Kevin, this is Treasure. We have a motion on the panel on a second. When I was getting deep breathed over the last few days about this, I was, I was under the impression that you had come to the conclusion of a, a five and five would be probably more palatable and actually more doable by the general assembly. But your motion wasn't a five and five, right?
Uh, that's true, Commissioner, I mean, that's true, Treasure Falwell, and I, I won't back away from the comments that I made, that, that is true. And as I, you might have heard me say earlier that when I made the motion that I was going to start there, here. So I want the firefighters to get what they're owed, firefighter rescue squad workers what they're owed and as much as they can get. So if it, if it ends up being less than ten and five, then, then, then that's where we end up at. But I learned a long time ago in business like this, aim high and settle for wherever, wherever you land.
All right. I don't think anybody disagrees with, with you in spirit. I'm just trying to board's going to vote on it. I'm trying to make, I'm trying to think through the feasibility of it actually happening. Because in the past, Kevin, over the last five years, we've talked about a five percent premium increase for one percent increase in the payment.
Yeah, but.
Today is right. You remember the day when we talked about increasing the payment to five dollars and all increase the benefit one dollar?
That's true. Yeah, I remember that. I remember all those conversations.
Yeah. And the reason I liked what was presented yesterday is I just think, I just think the five for five is, has a higher likelihood of actually passing. Now, the reason I'm most in favor of that is it's I predict that some people are going to put bills in, in the hopper that actually increase the benefit more than ten. I think if, personally, without any offense to the people that I've worked with for so many years along these lines, I think a five for five is more palatable to the general assembly. And if one of these bills comes in, has a two hundred dollar month benefit, obviously that would be a thirty dollar increase in benefits. So that's why I was so happy to hear that you're having some thoughts about that, but anyway.
So, so before you call for the vote there, so so if that's the case, then why has it, why is it a five, why hasn't the benefit enhancement been proposed at any time then? If the general assembly is going to pay the full freight on that additional benefit, then we could have been, we could have posed this two years ago or three years ago or five years ago.
Yeah, I, I don't have a clear answer for that. Obviously, you're doing most of that period of time, but I think the number one focus was to get the plan. National Guard and the firefighters plan were as far as their funded level were embarrassed. And I think the major focus was to get the plan fully funded. And I think the major focus was to get the plan fully funded. Thanks to you and all there for seeking, Josh, and Spies, to put into this, you know, we made that happen.
Well, this is probably the closest we've ever been to even entertaining an increase for this, so if, I want to make sure that the Treasurer's office is fully behind anything that we send over there, so is it going to be half supportive at ten dollars, or is it all supported at five dollars?
Well, as I, I only have one vote on this board, so it's really the will of the board at this point. As I said, yes, earlier, I became comfortable, as it was presented to me, that this was a five for five, really fully funded by the General Assembly. And if certain senators and house members that I've heard of are going to introduce bills that take this benefit from one-seventy to two-hundred, obviously, whatever this board says about five for five really doesn't matter too much, because the benefit would be five and thirty. So that's why I think this board showing a tip of the hat towards the General Assembly's work to get it fully funded to start with. And I think, I just think five for five sounds better, but I'm not, I'm not in the General Assembly. They want to go higher, they can, but I think that establishes a pretty good floor for them to say, it'd be very difficult, I think, for them to say no to that. All right. So. If you're ready, any more discussion?
Well, if that's the case.
Go ahead.
How many, how many members offer, offer, require every, every worker to be a member? Are there just certain members?
So, for this fund, any firefighter or rescue squad worker around the state, volunteer department or municipal department can choose to participate in the plan and pay the ten dollars a month. We would be talking about fifteen dollars a month for this proposal to participate for twenty years under the system. They're required to, to be working as firefighter or rescue squad worker, be in training and contribute to the fund for twenty years in order to be entitled to the benefit.
This is in addition to their actual pension?
Yes, for some of them, they'll also be entitled to the local government.
Any other discussion? The Treasurer stepped out for a second. He would like us to wait the vote back. Registered deeds? Is that? All right. We're just getting feedback, so we're going to, we may mute some folks who are, who are off mute, so we don't get the feedback.
I could just mention briefly that for the registers of deeds, that's on, there's no substantive decision for the board to make, in our opinion, as staff. The register of deeds supplemental pension fund has a strong funding surplus, and the board could recommend that there be no change to the employer contributions, which are one and a half percent of certain registered deeds office receipts. And no change to benefits, but actually taking, taking, making no recommendation does not require any action of the board, so necessity in our, in staff's opinion to do anything.
Any questions for Patrick on the registered deeds pension fund?
Since we're waiting for the Treasurer to come back in, I might as well ask, I'm not on the, I'm not on this board, but what is the plan for the hundred-and-fifty-seven-point-one percent funding ratio, long-term?
I, I'm not sure if I thought I heard possibly from this board, I'm trying to speak a little, a few minutes ago. I don't know, Kevin, do you recognize the ask?
Is, is Kevin Gordon? Put him on mute, he may have. Did you have something you want? Yes, Kevin, we can hear you.
No, I didn't have anything else.
Okay, thanks. Is the Treasurer still on the phone? Did you? Wait a minute?
No, don't even.
Any recommendation on how to proceed, or we should, I need to, should be long. We'll take, we'll take five minutes, how about that? We're going to take five minutes, those on the computer or phone. It's been a long day.
That was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm concerned about my three o'clock point now. I had a woman.
I had a tooth.
I had a one thirty, so. Anyway, we're back on the, let me address Kevin, Kevin, you still with us?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, you and I have known each other a long time. You know, I thought, first time I had an opportunity to meet you, I was going to be meeting the driver of number twenty-four, but I've actually had more respect for you than anybody else named Kevin Gordon right now. And, and as far as your comment about, you know, will the state Treasurer's office be half-hearted about a five and a ten? You know, I always have told you how I feel about certain subjects, and sometimes I don't like how you feel about things, and sometimes I don't like how I feel about things. But that's, that's, but our, there's no space between us as far as our commitment to public service, Kevin, and I, that's how I feel. I would never, depending on how this board votes on a five for ten, with it being fully funded, that's obviously going to be a decision the General Assembly is going to make. I think that a five for five, given General Assembly stepping up the plate over the years, and getting this plan from this embarrassing funding level to where it is now, I think, I think that's a, I think it sounds plausible. I think it gives you a good floor, and if some of these other bills that people are introducing that take it maybe up to five and thirty, they pass, and that's what will happen. But that's why I'm more comfortable with that other, but I'll never, I'll never half-heart anything that this board approves, Kevin, I just wanted to cut that.
Okay, well, I didn't think so. Well, with that, I would like to amend the motion in.
All right.
Did you say all right?
Yes.
All right, well, with that, it does probably make sense, and it probably, I'd be wise with the current environment, and then the fire service could always ask for something different if they, if they see fit. And being in an awkward position of being here and representing the associations as well, and, and understanding where we've been with the fund and the plan, and then just plans in general, then I'll make the motion for five and five. Five-dollar benefit enhancement and a five-dollar contribution. Five-dollar benefit, benefit enhancement and a five-dollar contribution increase.
Thank you, for a minute, Kevin, and then, a second to that.
Bernard and Cameron, I was talking that motion based on forty-five years in the fire service myself, anything we can do to help the volunteers, I'm one-hundred percent for it.
Now that I think of it, I do think that as the General Assembly starts to look at the totality of what we voted on today, the five for five is a probably, is going to make the most sense to them, and that's why I'm very proud of it. As I said, they can always increase.
On the table, yes, sir. There, just a technical clarification for Mr. Gordon.
Chairman's board. Mr. Gordon, if you would please beat your phone, that'd be great, go ahead.
If you'd like to just clarify, does the appropriation that goes along with your motion, it's recommended total appropriation for the fiscal year thirty-four million, six-seventy-eight, nine-seventy-one, is that correct?
Yep.
That's correct, that's correct.
Is that recurring? The twenty million sort of basic amount is recurring. Plus on top of it, which is keeping fully funded.
Okay, thank you. Motion being made, a second, a further discussion. Here, now the clerk can call a roll. Treasurer Falwell? Lee Atkinson? Over here, man? You, Jeffrey Morse? Jeffrey Morse?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's brew it. Melody Brady?
Aye.
Thank you, Nancy Vaughn? Pat Hurley?
Aye.
Tony Brown? Thank you, motion passes. Thank you, guys, for joining us, and I've got a floor. Thank you. Now Aberdeen, what's the first gentleman?
Gilren. The first gentleman. Gilren.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have no idea where we are. Okay, Tim.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you, good afternoon, my name is Timothy Melton, I'm the Assistant General Counsel for the Retirement Systems Division. Agenda item fourteen involves recent legislation that will require an otherwise eligible employer that is not a taxing unit to obtain a surety for its potential withdrawal liability before it commits participation in elders. So, and while we're doing that is. Generally, there's a withdrawal for units to cease participation in teasers as withdrawal liability. Not taxing authorities, obviously not having the power to tax to generate revenue. You know, there, there's some uncertainty whether or not that withdrawal liability would be paid upon their seizing.
So if people try to withdraw from the system and not pay their tail, then there's going to be a money there from a bond to pay it.
Right, that's exactly right, that's the tale you were referring to before, is the withdrawal liability. So, last year, the General Assembly enacted Session Law twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two dash seventy, which provides that an eligible employer that's not a taxing authority, and is not participating in elders as of September first, two thousand twenty-three, so September of this year. They won't be eligible to commence participation without obtaining a surety as defined by the rules adopted by the board. Legislation further provides that the rules will address how the eligible employer that's not a taxing authority will cover this liability. And so in light of this legislate, legislation, DST staff prepared proposed text addressing how an otherwise eligible employer that is not a taxing unit can provide surety, and DST staff also provided the regulatory and fiscal impact analysis. That provides more detail about the proposal, including alternatives, benefits, and impacts. But if you pull up, Lisa, the attachment, that is the proposed rules text and impact analysis. And if everybody can take a look at Appendix A, that's where the actual text of this proposed rule is located. And if everybody can take a look at Appendix A, that's where the actual text of this proposed rule is located. And proposed rule citations are twenty N C A C O two C point zero two one zero and point zero two one one. So zero point two one zero, that define, provides some definitions. So it defines surety as written agreement for the fulfillment and guarantee of the withdrawal payment in order to cease participation in elders. It defines the estimated withdrawal liability, which is the estimate provided by the consulting actuary and prepared with the assumption that the participating employer would cease participation ten years after the participate, after initial participation. Point zero two one one, that's the proposed rule text that states that a non-taxing authority shall have, shall provide the surety that may be incurred. And what, how they would do that is just submit a duly adopted resolution stating that the non-taxing authority is maintaining an amount equal to or greater than the estimated withdrawal liability, maintain that in a secure financial instrument, and will also maintain those funds throughout its participation in elders. Additionally, there's a requirement that the future participating employer, or the non-taxing authority, submit a resolution, acknowledgement, and acceptance letter that would be signed by the members governing Board. So the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management, they've already looked at this impact analysis and approved it. The next step is now for the elders board to approve the proposed rule text and analysis. Once that is done, we'll submit the proposed rule text and analysis to the Office of Administrative Hearings to be published in the Register. And that'll kick off the sixty-day public comment period and the fifteen-day public hearing request period. So today, staff recommends that as the rulemaking body, the elders board approve the proposed rule text and the regulatory fiscal analysis impact relating to twenty N C A C O two C point zero two one zero and point zero two one one. In addition, that the elders board authorized DST staff to take all the additional necessary steps to complete the permanent rulemaking process. Thank you.
A motion?
Does this occur when they first hire the person? Because every time they hire a new employee, of course, it would go up.
This, this more is on the front end, so when, after September of twenty twenty-three, if a non-taxing unit that would otherwise be eligible for joining elders, you know, they'd have to meet surety requirements essentially. You know, provide some assurance that there will be some funds remaining if they ever leave elders in order to pay that withdrawal liability.
So this could be an airport authority, an ABC board, a charter school. Some of them are just, they don't want the cheese anymore. They just went out of the trap. They, they just don't want to be, fund the elders. Some of them, like across the street, went out of business. There was just five billion there, but there's no, there's no money to pay their bill. So this is a way of protecting the system.
Absolutely. I just wanted to be sure that those to be eligible for the retirees, they only have to work five years.
Now, this, this is about the, the employing unit.
Employer.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we have provisions, in case you don't know. I mean, somebody, some, some folks have tried to leave the system, and their tail is six, seven, eight, nine billion dollars. As a, as a charter school, for example. So we have policies in place for anybody that says you can, we'll, we'll put you, just like you paid into the system every year, we'll let you pay us back over three years. So we're, we've had great success with that. And making sure that the point is, is to protect the people who are left in the system.
Generally, there's four types of entities that are non-taxing authorities. There's airport authorities, economic, economic development commissions, housing authorities, and the tourism development authorities.
I hear motion. Did I get a motion?
If there are other questions, I'll make a motion. All right, and we'll prove this.
All right, the motion by Mr. Brown, second. Thank you, Matt. Mr. Hurley, any further discussion? I know that was our shortest presentation, but Tim has put a lot into this in working with OSBM to protect our members.
And other staff as well.
Yeah, and other staff, thank you. The motion's second, being on the table. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing now the clerk call roll. Treasure Falwell?
Hi.
Lee Atkinson?
Hi.
Over here, man? Over here, man?
Hi. Hi.
Jeffrey Morris?
Hi.
Kevin Gordon? Kevin Gordon? I don't hear Kevin. Lance Brewer? Lance Brewer?
Hi.
Thank you. Melody Brady?
Hi.
You, Nancy Vaughn? Don't hear Mayor Vaughn. Bernadette? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Now we'll have Tom giving us a court cost offset. Very technical, very important.
So the Department of State Treasurer receives court costs, of which a portion is used to offset employer contribution rates for law enforcement officers. And just over the years, the costs have been dropping, that we've received have been dropping, while law enforcement officer salaries have been rising, causing us to reduce the offset over several years. With the last drop of the offset in two thousand fourteen to point one four percent, this allowed the reserves to be built back up in the, and in twenty twenty, you recall, we had enough reserves to raise the offset back to point two percent. We did see another significant drop in court costs received in twenty twenty. Court costs have since increased, although not as high as levels before twenty twenty. But, but just based on the lower projected court costs, higher law enforcement officer salaries, we anticipate begin cutting into the reserve that we built, but slowly over time. But we still believe we can keep it at the point two, point, point two percent offset at this time, so we're, so we're going to leave it at that right now. And then we're just going to be looking at that in the future years and see where those court costs go.
Good. Thank you. All right, next. Really? This is a good one.
We have arrived at the table of Agenda Item Number sixteen.
That's sweep sixteen.
So I, this is Patrick Kinlaw, and I'm joined at the table by Mike Ribble from Buck. Buck assisted us with the actuarial measurements of the study to describe. I'll be taking you through the material, and Mike is also here to participate in any conversation and answer questions about Buck's work. In the interest of time, I'll start on page six of this presentation. Retiree's contributory death benefit plan is a voluntary plan overseen by both the state and the local boards. So voluntary plan that state and local retirees can enroll in at their own decision. If they enroll, they pay a monthly premium based on the age when they retire. If they pay premiums for at least two years and continuously for the rest of their life, then upon their death, there is a ten percent, sorry, ten thousand dollar benefit paid to their beneficiary who are divided between multiple of them. If they pass away within the first two years, their beneficiaries receive a refund of their premiums with interest. If they stop paying premiums out of their own choice, then no benefit is paid. Moving to page seven, this plan was designed to be funded solely by retiree premiums and investment returns offered. However, for several consecutive years, the consulting actuaries have reported that the plan is, has a projected shortfall. It is not eminently running out of money, but it is projected to run out of money before it can pay all expected benefits. It's worth noting that the projected shortfall on all future benefits in present value is a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars as of the end of twenty twenty-one. The twenty twenty-two investment returns will not help that number. At last January's meeting, the boards directed staff to engage with the consulting actuaries on a study of alternative solutions to address the projected funding shortfall and report back. Which may not have anticipated all the other things that would be happening. As staff members, we thank you for the decision to study this because in this type of situation, the problem evolves gradually. And if the solution can be implemented early, then the solution can also be gradual, have less of an impact on people. So together with staff and with Buck, we have discussed a wide range of alternatives, many of which were dismissed before we took the step of measuring the actuarial impact. For example, because they would have a severe impact on members and retirees and their families. Some examples of those are toward the back of the presentation. But after that, there were four alternatives that remained, which the actuaries measured for us. And the way the actuaries measured that was to say, suppose this alternative had already been implemented before the end of twenty-one, what would the projected shortfall measurement have been at that point instead of a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars? So moving to page eight, I'd like to describe alternative one in some detail, and then the other ones more generally unless there's questions about them. The reason for that is our study shows that alternative one would have the most meaningful impact on the actuarial measurement out of all the alternatives that were studied, with less impact on retirees and their families. Alternative one is focused on the investments of the plan. The assets of this plan are held in the state employees' benefit trust, which also holds assets for a few other death benefit programs administered by our division. Out of those death benefit programs, the contributory death benefit plan is the only one that has a projected shortfall. But the assets of one program cannot be used to pay for the benefits of another program. The entire state employees' benefit trust, all four programs, is invested in the bond index fund, which is high-quality fixed income investments with about two percent attached. By contrast, the retirement systems, such as the ones you see listed at the bottom of this page, are invested by statute in a broader range of instruments, like public equity, private equity, and so forth, all within, when it's set by statute. On page nine, the idea of alternative one would be to expand, ask the General Assembly to expand the statutory definition of retirement systems for investment purposes to include the state employees' benefit trust. This would allow the assets of the death benefit programs, including the contributory death benefit plan, to be invested in the same pool of assets as the retirement systems, and it would still be tracked separately, just like the retirement systems are tracked separately. The main effect this would have on the actuarial measurement is that there would be a reasonable expectation for a greater assumed return on assets in the future by having different investments in these different categories. In measuring this, Buck assumed that the boards would expect future returns of six percent per year instead of the current three percent that is assumed from bond investments. If this had been implemented back in twenty twenty-one, the funded condition measured at that point would have been a projected surplus of one hundred and three million, rather than a projected shortfall of one hundred and seventy-eight million. So that is a difference of two hundred and eighty-one million.
Wait a minute, if the, if it had been, had been implemented when?
Before the end of twenty twenty-one. So that is the estimated impact. If it were, if it were implemented now, we could assume that when Buck measures things at the end of twenty twenty-three, that you would expect to see a similar size impact now. Also on this page, even though this alternative seems to be very attractive, we did want to make sure you're aware of what we perceive as the cons at the bottom of page, the downs, the downside of it. The main thing in this list that is not very controllable is that in expanding the investments to equities and beyond, a higher level of long-term risk is being introduced. But the level of risk would be commensurate with the risk already being taken in the retirement systems. And there's actually some offsets to the risk here because of having more diversified investments supposed to mitigate the risk. The other things in the list of cons here, we believe are more straightforward. For instance, that it requires legislative action, which if the boards recommended it, our department would advocate for it. You can see the other things listed here as well. For alternatives two through four, I would like to just briefly describe what they are by going back to page five, which summarizes them all in one place. And the remaining pages of the presentation, we could refer to if there are any questions. Alternative two, that Buck's measured for us, was to increase the schedule of premiums that future retirees pay under this plan. For purposes of measuring on alternative, we assumed that the premiums will be increased by ten percent at all ages for future retirees. Alternative three would be to change that part of the plan that says if someone passes away within their first two years, they don't get the full ten thousand dollar benefit, they get a refund of their contribution of the premiums. Change that to say three years instead of two. So if they pass away in the third year, they would not get the full ten thousand dollar benefit, they would still get a refund of their premiums. That would be alternative three. Alternative four would be to offer all the currently enrolled retirees a one-time opportunity to disenroll from the plan voluntarily in exchange for, and paying them fifty percent of their accumulated premiums. But there would be no ten thousand dollar benefit paid upon their death. So you can probably tell that alternatives two and four, three and four, they all have some impact on retirees or future retirees. Alternative two is a higher cost of the premium. Alternative three is a lower benefit in some circumstances. Alternative four is a choice that retirees would have, so it's not an imposition on them, but it would require careful operation and communication to make sure people understand the choice they're making. And there's a big open question about how many people would accept it and who would accept it. So on page five, there are a lot of numbers, in part because alternative, for alternatives two to four, the actuarial measurement depends quite a bit on whether alternative one is happening also. If alternative one is happening, then you're changing the underlying investments of the plan, and sort of the cost-benefit analysis of anything else you do is affected by the fact that the investments are different now. So we asked Buck to measure the possible impact of each of these alternatives. In the first column with results in it assumes that each of them, each of these alternatives were done independently, just on its own. But we would like to focus more on the second column of impacts, which is what if each of these alternatives was being implemented and alternative one was also being implemented? Because we think that's the more likely scenario that you'd be thinking about for two through four.
What's the, what's the, what's, what's, does this thing have a stopwatch on? I mean, not you, but. No, I mean.
What's so pressing about that today? Yes, thanks for asking. So the, the actuaries have reported for ten years now that there's a projected shortfall. And the projected shortfall was always less than a hundred million dollars until the last two years. It started to look like a hundred thirty and then a hundred seventy. It's not projected to run, the plan is not projected to run out of money next year or within ten years. It's projected to run out of money in about forty or fifty years. But the earlier the boards can do something about it, the more likely it can be solved by something gradual instead of going out and reducing benefits or increasing premiums.
Anybody in this room is not going to be living fifty years from now. He's going to accuse himself or. How many people are on the plan? About two hundred thousand people are on this plan. I'm almost, I'm, I should say something I'm a bit embarrassed about saying, but I'm not sure. I'm, I mean, do a lot of people not know they're on the plan?
I don't know.
Okay, so.
You sign up and you retire.
Oh, well, that's my mom.
It's contributory, though.
Okay.
So retirees get a choice.
That's why, because I've been saying, well, I've not moved in a moment. All right, but is there a benefit for people who die in service? who die in service? Which is not this.
That does not require them to contribute to it.
Am I on that plan?
You'll never know.
All right, we're not calling on anybody else. John, you got some big shoes to fill. Okay, so what happens, what do you think the likelihood of somebody who's retired? What do you think the likelihood if we should try number four, see where that gets us?
I think that number four has a big range of possible outcomes. So Buck has measured this, there's a big bold comment at the bottom, that when they measured the possible impact of that, they assumed everyone who was offered this choice to disenroll would take it. But they would say, if I've contributed $6,000 in premiums during my retirement, I will accept your $3,000 back and not get my $10,000 death benefit. In reality, when you offer that kind of choice, A, we don't know how many people would take it, B, we don't know who would take it and whether it would create actually a problem for the plan. Somebody might take that and they were thinking, oh, you know what, I was going to stop paying my premium anyway. I was tired of paying $12 a month to this plan. And now that they're offering me a chance to disenroll for, and get $3,000, I'll gladly take the $3,000. But otherwise, the plan wouldn't have had to pay them anything. So if they had just chosen on their own to stop.
But aren't we, as many people that may avail themselves of that, aren't we going to be picking up that many more every month of people who do take this benefit? But is that, and that benefit's unfunded, underfunded when, soon as we take it?
No, great, great question. So Mike may be able to share more of this. But the, what our actuaries have advised us is the premium schedule for current new retired, people who are retiring right now, that's about right to pay those people's benefits. The reason the plan has a shortfall is related to all the years in the past underfunded, the premiums were not at the right level.
There's a small anti-selection possibility because we're saying the values are equal based on the mortality of the population, but those that are elected might not be as healthy, which is why we came up with the premium, the increase in.
Does anybody have any heartburn on just absorbing this till the next meeting? And not that, I'm, I just think it's, it's not the biggest thing we do in here, but it's not nothing either.
It is a. And everybody would remember, I just, I really can't see increasing premiums when I read here, I mean, how much they were going up to because $66.14 a month at age 80? I mean, I'm hoping to get to 80. And so that would be a whole lot. I think I'm still, I'm in the group that just pays $10 and I just keep on going.
The premium is based on your age when you retire. So the $66 is if someone retires at age 80, and they say, I'd like to sign up for this plan that will pay $10,000 on my death. Then they pay $66 a month versus if somebody who retires at a younger age, but whenever you retire, you lock in your premium.
I was 52. So that's fairly young, 30 years and leave.
I would just say while we're, while this is all fresh in our minds, our observation is that out of these alternatives, it's not that two, three and four are bad, they're reasonable to think about, they do have impact on people. Alternative one is the one that has the biggest actuarial impact, the least impact on people. And the boards don't have to do anything today, but if the boards do something, both boards would have to do, recommend legislation together, or else neither decision would be effective.
And I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I'm not buying what you're selling on the, if it had been invested alongside the pension plan, because it says as of, it has to, there has to be some assumption on as of, I know when it says as of when, but how long would it have to have been invested alongside the pension plan to show that?
We're assuming going forward, the assets are moved from their current.
If we hit our assumed rate of return.
Then we would get a super. Right, instead of 3%, short-term investments, it's under, we'd be under longer-term investments. And we assume 6%.
But we're in the 50th percentile of hitting our assumed rate of return over the next 10 years. Isn't that three?
Three, so it's three for this fund. Not sure that applied to the 3%.
Okay, I mean, but, okay. Well, for the record, we're earning about 6% right now in our bond fund. I mean, not six, we're, we're investing, we're finding opportunities at 6% in four and five-year pay. So is that where the money's sitting now?
Ninety-eight percent in the bond of that fund, 2%.
Right. Down 12% last year. As long as we hold it, maturity will be fine. Okay. I'm not kicking the can down the road, it's not my style, but I just think it's. If anybody has any heartburn about doing it tonight, not today. Folks?
I won't master this song. If we could just bring it back at a date certain, rather, because I thought somebody 40 years from now is going to be like, what were they doing?
Next, no, we're talking about 40 years. All right. Yeah, I'll spring it back in the next meeting.
Are we still going to do the public speaks out? We've got a lady that came from Almanzt County and.
Hey, how are you?
They're getting an education here.
Yeah, we're definitely going to do that. Thank you for joining. I'm a Scot from Almanzt County also, so, not the British Scots, the other Scots.
The Scots on 62? Okay.
Great, great. Uncle was the superintendent of the city school system in the turn of centuries.
Oh, wow.
All right, hey.
Good afternoon.
Introduce yourself.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Karen Slate. I am from Almanzt County. I am literally retired from Almanzt School System. I'm retired as of June 1. And I come this afternoon, I was asked to come and speak on behalf of what you guys know as classified employees, what we call ESPs, our education support professionals, which would be our teacher assistants, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, maintenance man, all those people that aren't certified. And as a retiree, one of the things that I took in consideration when I got ready to retire, my understanding was for a classified person to retire with full benefits, it was age plus years, which I hit. And so when I called about my retirement and they told me that I qualified for full benefits, you know, I kind of got excited. At that time, my husband was still living as well. So I had made the decision to go ahead and retire. I was going to retire, enjoy my husband, we were going to travel, whatever. And before my retirement, my husband did pass. In doing so, I looked at, ooh, maybe I don't want to retire, maybe I do want to work another year. Because when I looked at, even though receiving full benefits, I also looked at what my retirement pay would be along with my social security. It wasn't going to be enough for me to maintain my home. And it just, it just wasn't going to be enough. Mind you, I've, I've served the school system for 24 years as a teacher assistant, but along with that, I've served the school system for 23 years of that 24 as a bus driver, full-time, getting paid part-time, but working full-time as a bus driver. That's driving in the morning, being in a classroom all day, driving in the afternoon, and driving some, the van and other things. My point is, as a classified employee, had it not been for me driving a bus along with being a teacher assistant, my retirement would have been less than $500 a month. That less than $500 a month plus my social security, I would have had to give up my home, or either not retire, or either retire and find another job. I don't know what your definition of retirement is, but my definition of retirement is when I retire, that means I don't work. I retire to enjoy what I've worked for. I retire, I retire to enjoy my grandchildren, I retire to travel, I retire to, you know, just enjoy, you know, enjoy life. There are a lot of people in that situation now. And that's why we have a lot of classified employees now who work, who are still working, who may have had, may have the time in to retire, and some may have the time plus the age to retire, but they can't afford to retire. Because their retirement pay along with their social security will not, they're unable to continue to, and that's not to say that people are living beyond their means, I, that's something I never understood when you say people are living beyond their means. That's not to say that they're trying to live beyond their means, but they want to be able to survive. They want to be able to pay their bills and buy their groceries and some on medications, be able to pay for medications that insurers won't cover. They want to be able to do those things. They want to be, maintain their independence. They don't want to have to depend on their maybe adult children to help them out financially or anything like that. There are too many classified employees that are working past their time because of that. And I know this because I've worked with them. And some of them are still working. You have 70, 75 and 80-year-old people working, still continuing to work because they can't afford to retire. Now, for me, it's been a blessing because I was married to a man, my husband was retired military. So because he was retired military, I was able to, I'm able to receive his military benefits as his wife. So that has helped me. That's the reason why I can continue to stay retired. But everybody's not me. So these are things, this is something that I believe really needs to be addressed and looked at for classified employees. And, and when I think about it, I look at some of the contributing factors. One of the main contributing factors, I think, was, I started the school system in 1998. And there was a point where certified educators, and I'm going to use the word educators because I see us all as educators, certified educators received pay raises, classified educators didn't. For two years, I know, and it might have been three, we see, we received bonus days. Can't pay bills with bonus days. And even if you tried to save them until your retirement, there was no guarantee because I ended up using mine. Because what, life happened. I had death in my family or sickness in my family and I had to use those days. I wasn't able to save them. And there are many that were not able to save them. There are classified employees went many years, just like a lot of other employees, without a pay raise, when teachers were getting pay raises, and they might not have got a lot, but they did get pay raises and classified employees got nothing. So those are contributing factors too, because when you think about retirement, your retirement depends on what your income has been. And if income's not there, it can't be counted. Like I said, what helped me to be able to bring home more, to receive more than $500 in retirement was because I was working as a TA and driving a school bus. So that increased my retirement pay. Everybody's not like, everybody's not me. I'm just that one person that did. And there are others that are doing the same thing, but they're going to be in the same boat when they get ready to retire. And it's a shame that we have so many classified employees that are eligible for retirement but are unable to retire because their finances will not allow them to.
Thank you. Karen, what was your husband's name?
My husband's name was Cravon.
Cravon. What did he do during his lifetime, military?
He served nineteen and a half years, 19 years, yeah, nineteen and a half years in the Air Force. So he retired from the Air Force.
Thank you for sharing this. I'm not going to ask you what you made as a teacher assistant, but it's possible, don't tell me.
I want to tell you like this, I want to tell you like this, when I first started as a teacher assistant, my take-home pay was less than $1,000.
I know TAs that have been in the system 20 years and make $2,000 a month. So I, I know that for a fact. So I'm empathizing with what you're saying and, and I know how, we know how important TAs are.
And you know what?
And we know how involved, but we definitely know how important bus drivers are. So I wanted to, thank you for your service and I wanted to ask if you would, if you would object to us adjourning our meeting today in honor of your husband.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We're sorry for your loss. All right. Tim's already left.
Tom McCall.
Hey, Tom, how are you?
And yourself?
Good. Oh, I was going to read that, but that's not.
I could read it.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, sorry. Sorry.
I'm Tom.
That's why I was confused, because I thought you were on the phone.
Tim was on the phone. I've been sitting back here the whole time.
When Tim was on the phone, I was wondering why I was sitting back here the whole time. All right.
I'm Tom McCall. I'm the director of communications and engagement with the North Carolina Retired Governmental Employees Association.
All right.
Have a prepared statement for you all. This is read on behalf of Tim O'Connell, the executive director of the North Carolina Retired Governmental Employees Association, who cannot attend today and is quarantined with COVID, still alive and well. Esteemed ladies and gentlemen of the Elgar's and Tzars Board of Trustees, a new year is upon us and the leadership of NCRGEA, I wish you a year of peace, success and good decisions. Leading our association of more than 66,000 members in all 100 North Carolina counties, we are optimistic to not only continue but improve the quality of life for all governmental retirees. While optimistic, we are aware of the headwinds our state may face in the months to come. As our economy now remains strong despite looming bearish economic activity, retirees continue to drown in a rising tide of inflation. No one in this room can deny that inflationary periods hit those on fixed incomes worse. It's true for the retirees whom you serve as system trustees. As we journey through the new year, we stand in our membership to fight for inflation-abating adjustments for retirees. Financial quality of life is our first and primary charge in our service to retirees. As we ask that you join us in improving retiree quality of life, we ask that you also make our retirees' financial stability your first and top priority. And thank you for your dedication to North Carolina and her people. I look forward to working together in the years to come. To echo somewhat of what Karen had talked about, as I mentioned, we have 66,000 members throughout the state in every single county, and a lot of our members are also outside of the state of North Carolina. Our numbers are growing and continue to grow. And continuously, every single day, we hear from, basically stating that they cannot survive on their retirement. Now, I've heard it and hear, and I fully agree with you, it's a system of math. You know, you cannot continue to put out what is not coming in. And in that, I also believe that when you put out, and studies have shown that this is true, that when the money goes out, the money gets spread out more and more and more. And a lot of that money will turn around and come back into the state through revenue, through purchases. That will have come into the retirement system, to the coffers dedicated to the retirement system, no, will not. As I understand this, you know this better than I do. But it will come back into the state through revenue. And so granted, a lot of what I'm saying, a lot of what Karen has mentioned, those And so granted, a lot of what I'm saying, a lot of what Karen has mentioned, the board has already made its recommendation to go to the General Assembly. But the General Assembly, I'm sure, will come back and talk to you all. So also please, when you do talk to them and when they do talk to you all, remember that the money doesn't just go on out there and stop and disappear and go into the other states, it's going to come right back into North Carolina. Especially, it's going to go into our smaller cities, our smaller communities. A lot of the cities like Raleigh, Durham, Charlotte, Wilmington, a lot of the big cities, they have other businesses that people can absorb. The dollars will not go as far. But when you go off of the main interstate, when you go into the smaller towns, such as like the county that Oliver brought up, you go into those, it's those pension dollars and it's been shown, those pension dollars are what keeps those small towns alive because businesses have bypassed them. Until we start bringing businesses into those smaller towns, they're going to continue to bypass them. But the only other thing I want to close with is, a lot of what has made North Carolina what she is today, and I am very extremely proud to say I am a North Carolinian born and bred, I moved out of the state, saw my mistake and came right back to it, is that it is the North Carolina citizens and the, actually our civil servants that made us what we are today. And yes, in, in our hearts, we want to owe them. Dollars may not be there, but someone has got to replace these people. And if the retirement systems are not necessarily there to attract the quality of people to replace them, our systems will start to implode. They'll get weaker and weaker because there's nothing to draw them here. So when you consider the retirement systems, remember that's one of the things that will draw people to our state to work for the state to improve the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll start on the phone before we adjourn, just hang with us a minute so we have a court adjourned. Thank you. Is any members from the phone would like to have any closing comments? And members from the attending in person?
It's a bit long, sorry. I know it was a bit long. Thank you, we're not here to move agendas, we're here to make important decisions. I'd like to thank you for your oversight today to allow us to wander sometimes in circles without trying to direct us or steer us into important decisions. Give us and the board, and also thank you for giving us the time, clearing schedules to explore options, accumulating some knowledge and making informed decisions as opposed to just a recommendation on a piece of paper. Again, thank you for it.
Good job. Anybody else? Yes.
I'd like to say something, just a minute, with what they're saying with the estate employees and being a new one in my first meeting today, many of us do still have to pay taxes on our retirement also, which doesn't help. So that's just.
Got to catch the check to pay the. That check ends up in this cheese. Colleen, thank you, welcome. Appreciate you hanging with us. I apologize again for time, not bringing you lunch today. Do with that, boy. But anyway, I did never suspected it would go this long, but I appreciate you hanging in there, those by phone and by the person. And as we said earlier, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in honor of Cravon Slade and his service. You've heard me say before, people die twice, once when their spirit leaves heaven and earth, which Karen has seen, and the second time is when the last living person remembers who they were or says their name. So he's still with us today because we're saying his name. So I entertain a motion for the TAs to adjourn in honor of Mr. Slade.
I saw move second.
Second, not your second, need further discussion? You know, the court will call the roll. Treasury Paulwell?
Aye.
Clay Thompson?
Yes.
Attorney Sherman?
Aye.
Jeffrey Winston?
Aye.
John Evans?
Aye.
Letts Brewer? Oliver Holly?
Aye.
Vernon Gavin? Glad Patrick can have a vote. So the TAs are adjourned, just to announce April 27th, July 27th, October 26th for our next meeting, for me to entertain, I hear a motion to adjourn the.
Make a motion?
What's that?
Jeff Moore?
Hey, Jeff, I'll let you be the second. Mr. Brown's the first. Need further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Brown, excuse me, Slade will adjourn elders, all those, I mean, without further discussion, court will call the roll. Treasury Paulwell? Lee Atkinson? Lee Atkinson? Lower Dearman?
I wonder how many Jaywalkers he's arrested.
Lower Dearman? Kevin Gordon? Letts Brewer? Letts Brewer? Tony Brady?
Aye.
Thank you. Nancy Vaughn? Pat Hurley?
Aye.
Lee Atkinson? Lower Dearman? Or Kevin Gordon? Letts Brewer? All those in favor of adjourned, the meeting signify by saying. You opposed?